All right, now we'll formally call this meeting to order before we begin the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council for May 10, 2017. We will first have engage as the Tatum Ranch Community Facilities District Board of Directors. So I will call that meeting to order and ask our city clerk to please call the roll.
Board member DeCecio.
Here.
Board member Gallego.
Here.
Board member Noakowski.
Here.
Board member Stark.
Here.
Board member Valenzuela.
Here.
Board member Waring.
Here.
Board member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Pastor.
Here.
Chairman Stanton.
Here. We now see there's a motion on the minutes from our July 1, 2015, meeting.
I move approval for July 1, 2015.
There's a motion, is there a second? There is a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes pass unanimously. Item number four is a proposed resolution which would approve the execution and delivery of a quitclaim deed of conveyance in the bill of sale to the city of Phoenix, Arizona, relating to all real and personal property owned by the district and dissolution of the district. Do you have a motion on such a resolution?
I move resolution.
Do you have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. I will now officially adjourn, I guess forever, the Tatum Ranch Community Facilities District Board. Now we'll enter into our formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. And the city clerk, would you please call the roll for the purposes of that meeting?
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pastor.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Here. We're fortunate to have our interpreter with us today, Ms. Judy Holm. Would you please introduce yourself to the audience?
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy interpreta de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you so very much. Now is the time for citizen comments. We will take up to 15 minutes now for citizen comments. Each member of the public can comment up to three minutes on any non-agendized item. There appears to be significantly more than the number of cards that fill up that time. If we're not able to get through all of these cards in the 15 minutes, you will have any citizen wishing to comment before the city council will have the opportunity at the end of our formal business meeting to provide additional citizen comments. First citizen is Mr. Leonard Clark. Mr. Clark, are you here? Great to see you, please come forward, followed by Lorenzo, I believe. Please come forward and get ready to speak after Mr. Clark. Good to see you.
Thank you very much, Mayor of Phoenix and City Council. My name is Leonard Clark, I'm a resident of Phoenix, born right down the street at Good Samaritan Hospital. There's so many things to cover right now, and the city of Phoenix being the sixth largest city in the country sets a lot of influence, not just for Arizona, but this whole region of our country. And I'm here, first of all, to ask the mayor and the council to stop letting the police investigate the police. I'm here because I believe in the wrongful death of Francisco Valdez, who apparently was found face down, apparently shot in the back, that I just, and it's no offense against police, I'm not on the left or the right, this is not about Democrat or Republican, this is simply about justice. Justice is held usually by a judge who is neutral. It can't be neutral when the police are investigating police. We are the only, one of the only major cities now that does not have a civilian oversight commission of our police. And I'm here as well for Dolores Imboden, who is also was strangled on March 16th and punched viciously in the parking lot of a Walmart, essentially, they said, for allegedly shoplifting. Again, I just don't think the police should investigate the police, but I'm not one of these people that says there should be no police, I'm not one of these people that says we should have police on every corner. Now, secondly, I'm also here because Representative Ken Clark, at the last part of the legislative hearing, testifying on the budget for elementary schools, because this affects the city of Phoenix, has testified that Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, although given a pittance and not proper funding by our conservative friends, five minutes down the street of the Capitol, are not properly testing lead in the water, and many parents are now complaining that many schools, especially in the city of Phoenix, have lead poisoning. Our children have apparently been successively, for successive generations, been poisoned by lead. And I think it's all about profits, it's all about, we don't want to hear that. I think that you, as the council, because we have so many, we have the largest Phoenix Union High School District, elementary districts in the state, you should be asking parents to individually, you can go on the internet, you can get the test kits for lead, since Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, they have some good people there, but Governor Ducey and our friends, our conservative friends, are not giving them enough money, please ask the parents to now go test for lead in the water. Many schools are poisoned with lead. Our children are being poisoned. This is Flint, it's happening in Oakland, California, all across the country. This is the naked emperor in the room, old cliche, but it is actually happening. We can do something right now. This is not conservative or Republican, it's our children are being poisoned by lead in our water in many elementary schools. I'm sorry you don't want to hear that, I have to be the unpopular person to do it. And finally, I'm very concerned right now, I'm hoping you will have a resolution to ask, even though your city, I believe it's within your purview, because right now our faith in our justice system, it's already teetering on the brink, now that we've had our FBI director fired because our chief executive, who apparently is colluding with the Russians, now will have nobody investigating him except for his own lackeys. How can we in here in Phoenix accept funding from the federal government when we don't even know we're getting fairly heard? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. How about Lorenzo? Is that the correct pronunciation, followed by Luz Enriquez?
Hello, my name is Viridiana, we're here with a number of community organizations supporting Lorenzo. On March 23rd, her son was shot and killed by Phoenix Police Department. She called because he was in distress, and she was afraid that he was going to hurt himself, and so she called to get help. And she's here today to ask for, to tell you her story, so you all are aware of it. This happened on 65th Avenue and Van Buren. She's asking for justice for her son, Francisco Valdez. She wants there to be an immediate investigation of all the officers involved, for the camera footage to be released immediately, the immediate firing of the police officers that were involved, and more than anything, protocol so that this does not happen anymore, an establishment of an independent response to mental health crisis, mental health, emotional distress, for there to be a different kind of call. My card was in there too, so you can take my time off.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Lorenzo Valdez, soy mamá de Francisco Valdez.
Good evening, my name is Lorenzo Valdez, I am the mother of Francisco Valdez.
Sí, yo estoy aquí presente ante ustedes, yo vengo a pedir justicia por mi hijo porque el día 23 de marzo le quitaron la vida a mi hijo los oficiales.
I'm here to share my story with you, to tell you, to ask for justice for my son, because on March 23rd, officers, police officers, took my son's life.
Yo quiero que se haga justicia por eso que pasó con mi hijo, le quitaron la vida. Yo sé que ellos pensaron que era una persona mala mi hijo, pero no. Yo sé, a lo mejor ellos porque él traía tatuajes en su cuerpo pensaban que era una persona mala, pero no.
My son was not a bad person, I don't know why this happened, if they thought he was a bad person because he had tattoos, or what, you know, what they thought, but my son was not a bad person.
Y como les digo, yo quiero que se haga justicia con ese oficial que hizo eso con mi hijo, porque cuando el primer oficial llegó a mi trailer, yo le dije a él que él ocupaba ayuda, y él le preguntó a mi hijo, ¿qué pasa? Le dijo, mi hijo, estoy, me siento desesperado porque ocupo mi medicina, dice mañana viernes voy a ir a recoger mis medicinas que ocupo.
I'm asking for justice because they knew that we needed help, that when the first officer arrived, they asked what was going on. I told them that my son needed help, that he was, you know, that he was anxious, that I didn't see him okay, and that he needed help. The officer asked my son what was going on, my son told them, I don't feel okay, I need my medicine, I haven't been able to get it, I need to go get it, and he was going to go pick it up on Friday.
Sí, yo lo único que le dije al oficial, le dije, él tiene orden de arresto, le dije, arreste, lo deténgalo, y me dijo, no podemos hacer nada señora, hasta que chequemos su récord, nosotros no podemos hacer nada.
I don't want my son to hurt himself, and I told them, you know, do something, arrest him if you can, and they said, we can't do that, we can't arrest him, we don't know his record, we can't just do that.
Después, como de rato llegaron otros dos oficiales, y se metieron para mi trailer, ni siquiera me tocaron la puerta, podemos entrar ni nada, y se metieron derechito allá a la trailer donde estaba mi hijo acostado en el sofá envuelto en su cobija.
Then two more officers showed up, they didn't ask if they could come in or anything, they just entered the house, and entered where we were, and my son was laying down, covered in a blanket.
Y ellos le preguntaron a mi hijo, ¿qué tiene?, si él también les dijo lo mismo que ocupaba su medicina, y les dijo él que si se podía levantar del sillón a ir al cuarto cambiarse, porque él estaba en puro boxer envuelto en su cobija, y les dijo que sí, y mi hijo se levantó y se fue para el cuarto.
They also asked him what was going on, what was wrong with him, he also told them, you know, the same, that he was not feeling okay. He was only wearing boxers, so he asked them if he could get dressed, and they said, yeah, go ahead, and he got up and walked to his room to get dressed.
Y yo, cuando él se levantó, los oficiales se quedaron en la trailer ahí, en la sala, y les dije yo, vayan, le digo, cuídmelo, yo no quiero que él se haga daño.
And when he started walking, he went over there, the officers stayed in the living room, I told them, please go, go watch him, make sure he doesn't hurt himself, I'm scared that he might hurt himself.
Y ellos se quedaron en el cuarto con él, y yo me fui atrás de ellos, y yo nomás miré que mi hijo estaba buscando su ropa ahí en la, ahí donde tenía su ropa él.
So we followed, and the officers followed, and I followed after them, and, you know, my son was just looking for his clothes.
Y él ya nomás me miró así, con una mirada muy triste mi hijo, y el otro oficial me dijo que iba a chequear el récord de él en la computadora, y me salí con él, como a los dos, tres segundos que iba bajando yo las escaleras de mi trailer, y se oyeron los balazos y corrí yo, y no me quisieron dejar meterme de tu vuelo oficial.
Saw him, you know, he was getting his clothes, he was calm, he just looked really sad, and then, and then the other officer asked me to step outside, so we can go check his police record, so then I started walking outside with the other officer, within three seconds, I heard gunshots, and I tried running back inside, and they didn't let me come back inside.
Y yo como pude y me les metí para adentro, y entré yo, y mi hijo estaba tirado en el suelo ahí, boca abajo, y uno de los oficiales le tenía la cobija arriba porque le estaba tapando donde ellos le pegaron, y yo le dije, está vivo, dice, sí señor, está respirando, pero yo sé que mi hijo ya estaba muerto porque me le dieron cuatro balazos en su espalda, le tiraron seis, y dos no le pegaron, no le pegó así, y los otros cuatro se lo dieron en su espalda mi hijo.
There were six shots fired, I was able to get in, and all I saw was my son on the floor, facing down. They had covered him, I asked if my son was alive, they said he was alive. They had shot six times, four of them hit him in the back, two of them, one of them passed him by the side, and the other one landed somewhere else in the home.
Sí, y ya, ya de ahí cuando yo les decía que quería ver a mi hijo, ya no me dejaron meter para adentro a verlo, me sacaron, no dejaban que nadie se arremara a ayudarme, al contrario, se reían de mí, porque yo les decía que yo quería ver a mi hijo, no me dejaron, que me quería ir con él en la ambulancia. A mi hijo lo sacaron así como sacar un animal en la camilla, sin cobijar ni nada, se lo llevaron.
I asked to be able to go inside and see him, they didn't let me, I was, I was not okay, didn't let anyone get near me to help, they didn't let me see my son anymore. They said he was alive, but I know that he had already passed away, they took him out as if they were taking an animal, they didn't help him, they didn't do any first, you know, respond, nothing, they just took him in this bed. On the contrary, I think the officers were laughing at me, I felt like they were ridiculing me.
Y yo como les digo, yo quiero que se haga justicia por lo que le hicieron a mi hijo, porque de esa forma que le quitaron la vida a mi hijo no, no tenían que haberlo hecho, y yo sé que todos tenemos hijos, y yo no quiero que se vuelva a repetir lo mismo como pasó con mi hijo, de la forma que le quitaron la vida a mi hijo.
I'm asking for justice because the way that they took my son's life should not, this should never happen to any other family, and I don't want any other family to have to live through this. I know many of you might have children, and I don't want this to happen again, because the way that they took my son's life should, should never have happened.
Y ahorita me quedaron tres hijos, y los más chiquitos, tengo uno de 16 y uno de 10 añitos, y a veces pasan por ahí, patrullas ahí por la área, ande vivo, mi niño corre y me dice, mami, vienen a matarnos, le digo, no mi hijo, no van a hacer eso, todos los niños que estuvieron en esa escena ahí, del día que, del crimen de mi hijo, ya no pueden ver una patrulla porque le corren, van y les dicen a las mamás, vienen a matarnos.
The response from police afterwards was traumatized our kids. I have two children, 16-year-old and then a young, de 10 años, 10-year-old. When officers are in the area, when they see an officer that's patrolling, they come running inside crying, saying, they're here to kill us. And all the other children in that neighborhood have, have those responses now since the incident.
Yo es lo único que pido justicia por mi hijo, y que no se vuelva a repetir lo mismo con nadie más de las personas, porque yo ahorita ya, si me pasan cosas así, ya no voy a poder hablarle a ningún oficial, ninguno.
All I'm asking is for justice, and for this to not happen to any other family, because if anything else happens, I, there's no way that I'm calling the police anymore. I don't want this to repeat.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorenzo. I think on behalf of every member of this dais, we just want to offer our deepest condolences and sympathies to you and the loss of your son. Our thoughts and prayers are with you and your family, and we can't say anything more than that legally because of the nature of, that this is a non-agendized item, so on citizen, citizen comments, but we have heard you, and thank you very much for taking the time to come down here today to tell us a story. Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor, we can ask for a report, right?
Yes.
If they can come to our office and give us a full report what happened, and also just want to let the mother know in Spanish that we can't talk back, I don't want her to think we're being rude to her, that we can't comment. So nomás quería decirte que, en este momento, nosotros no podemos hablar contigo porque es parte que se llama public comment, y entonces no es que no queremos ayudarte, pero en este momento, es parte de la ley que no podemos responder para atrás de tus preguntas, pero vamos a preguntar los policías que vengan y que nos dan un reporte, y a ver qué podemos hacer. Gracias.
All right, thank you.
What was the name of the son again, I'm sorry.
Obviously because of the nature of the comments, as well as the need for translation, we gave Lorenzo a little extra time. Next speaker will be Luz Enriquez.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Luz Enriquez, soy la...
Good afternoon, my name is Luz Enriquez.
Soy la vecina, yo miro todo lo que pasó ese día.
I'm a neighbor, and I saw everything that happened that day.
Y lo único que vengo a pedir es justicia para, para el muchacho, que encierren al policía, porque eso fue un asesinato. Ah, no creo que una persona que esté dormido, que lo levanten, quiere atacar a un policía si no tenía armas, y haberle dado seis balazos por la espalda. Eso no es justo. Me pusieron un policía fuera de mi casa más de ocho horas, que no pude salir yo de mi casa ni a la tienda. No es justo.
So I'm here to ask you to please ensure that this policeman is, this officer is convicted, and what happened was a crime, somebody who's laying on their couch, sleeping, and then all of a sudden is shot six times, it just doesn't make any sense, and it's a crime. And they even put a police officer outside of my own door.
Salió mi hijo, y le levantó el arma, a ver si él traía armas. Mi hijo tiene 15 años, y no se mira que sea un malviviente.
My son was outside, he is 15 years old, and they pointed a gun at him, and he's clearly not somebody who means any bad.
Y yo le respondí que si le iba a disparar también a él, y nos trataron muy mal ese día, nos ignoraban, no quisieron que le dieran nuestra ayuda a la señora, ni tocarla.
I asked the officer straight up if he was going to shoot my son, they treated us horribly that day, they wouldn't even allow us to actually help out Lorenzo, because she was doing horrible.
Y ahora todos los niños que viven en, ahí donde vivimos, no pueden ver los policías, corren, se esconden, tienen el miedo, dicen que los van a matar.
And now the children that live in that area, they can't even see a police officer, or any police officers, because they run scared, they believe that police officers are going to kill them.
Mi hijo lo tengo que llevar con psiquiatra, porque quedó muy mal, y tuve que ir por él varias veces de la escuela, porque se altera, y él no tenía ese problema.
I've had to take my son to a therapist, because he's not well, and I've had to pick him up from school because he has a crisis at school.
Y lo único que pido es que una persona como él, como ese policía, no ande en las calles, porque no quiero que pase otra desgracia a otra familia, como le pasó a ella, me puede pasar a mí.
And what I'm asking today is that a police officer like him, he shouldn't be in the streets, because I don't want what happened to her to happen to me, or to happen to someone else. That's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Enriquez, obviously the same admonition in terms of our ability to respond in any substantive way. BD, did you, did you want to give additional testimony, or, okay. And then we'll hear one more before we move on with the rest of our meeting. Again, there are additional cards, and those individuals have a chance to speak at the end of our business here with the formal agenda. Ms. Cervantes, Laura Cervantes, did you prefer your testimony?
Hola, mi nombre es Laura Cervantes, soy vecina de Lorena, Lorenzo Valdez, yo estuve en ese...
My name is Laura Cervantes, and I'm a neighbor of Lorenzo Valdez.
Yo estuve en ese momento cuando pasó todo, yo miré poco, pero miré muy bien lo que pasó.
I was there in that moment when all of that happened, I saw a little, but I saw enough.
Yo miré cuando llegó la policía, cuando se entró el primer oficial, y en al ratito llegaron otros dos oficiales. Llegaron, estuvieron con Lorena Valdez, y uno los, un oficial sacó a Lorenzo Valdez afuera.
I saw when the police officers arrived, and I also saw those two of them, and one of them brought Lorenzo Valdez outside.
Y cuando sacaron a Lorenzo Valdez, bajando los escalones, al instante se dieron los balazos. Y yo lo que estoy pidiendo es justicia, porque mis niños estaban afuera, ellos nunca pensaron por los niños que estaban afuera, si, o podían dispararle a ellos, o el trauma que ellos iban a tener. Es lo que yo estoy pidiendo justicia, y el policía, ¿qué hizo eso? Que ya no trabaje, porque yo no quiero que en un futuro le vaya a pasar eso a mis hijos, o que ellos tengan su confianza con los policías, porque la verdad, no lo tienen.
And I'm asking for justice, because all of the children that are outside saw this happen, and they're all severely traumatized, and we need justice, and we need this police officer not to be in the streets.
Ah, como actuaron, enfrente todos los niños, sacaron a Francisco Valdez, desnudo, con su boxer, porque él así estaba, con su pantalón abajo de los tobillos, y así lo aventaron afuera, en la camilla, enfrente de todos los niños. Mis niños están, la verdad, no sé cómo explicarlo, lloran, gritan, ven policías, ahorita están asustados, están atrás, están asustados, y me dice, mami, ¿qué pasa, mami? Van a hacer daño? Y yo lo único que quiero es justicia.
So they took out Francisco from the house, from the trailer, practically naked, he was in his boxers, and they literally not covered, and they just threw him on, on the, on the bed, to put him in the ambulance. All the children witnessed this, my own children witnessed this, and they scream, they cry, they say, mommy, the police officers are coming, are they going to kill me?
Y lo que le hicieron a Francisco, para mí, es un delito, porque nadie tiene derecho de quitarle la vida, nadie. Si él, ellos sabían que el muchacho era popular, ¿por qué no le prestaron ayuda? Porque llegaron a actuar, a dispararle, como tiene una pistola eléctrica para defenderse, ¿por qué tanto balazo? Si eran tres policías.
So to me, what they did to Francisco is a crime, and if they knew that he was bipolar, why did they arrive with intention to shoot? Why did they shoot him? Why couldn't they use a stun gun if he really truly got violent? Why couldn't they have used any other type of mode, and they had to shoot him?
Y lo más que yo siento feo es que no me dejaron prestarle ayuda a la señora, a mi vecina, los policías, la miraban tirada en el piso, desmayada, y ellos no fueron por darle auxilio, nada. Yo me metía, debía que levantar mis manos como si yo hubiera hecho algo malo para prestarle ayuda a ella, porque se comulsionaba. Eso para mí tampoco es justo, que supuestamente son policías, deben que tener sus aparatos, sus cámaras, para ayudarles, darles ayuda, no sé, yo no entiendo por qué actuaron así.
And what I feel really terrible about is the fact that I was not allowed to actually be helpful to Lorenzo, she was on the floor, she was, she fainted, the cops were not allowed to actually give her any help, nor would they provide any help, any of the police officers, they were not helpful at all, and so she was suffering convulsions and not well, and that should not be behavior by the police department.
Y también lo que hicieron fueron que se la llevaron a interrogar desde las seis y media, y la soltaron a las tres de la mañana, y nunca le dio un permiso de acercarse al niño chiquito que ella tiene, porque, yo sé por qué, porque yo estuve ayudándola. Cuando ella le dijeron que se fuera a ese instante, a una camioneta roja, no sé de qué es, no, yo les pedía, por favor, ayúdenle, ayúdenle, porque ella se le doblan sus piernas, y no. Yo tuve que correr, decirle, yo les ayudo, y ellos apuntando a todo mundo, niños grandes con sus pistolas. No eran pistolas chiquitas, eran sus pistolas grandes, en cada trailer, en cada esquina, no tenían las privacidad de salir, o, si me entiende, los encerraron en las trailers, no dejaron entrar carros, ni personas, como si uno hubiera hecho algo, o tuviera algo uno.
So again, there was no real help provided, children had guns pointed at them, we were trapped inside of our trailers. Also, she, they had her from like 6:00 PM until 3:00 in the morning in some van, and they wouldn't allow her child to go near her, or to be with her, and that doesn't make any sense.
Y yo lo único que pido es el cuchillo que dicen que el muchacho tenía, porque yo entré. Yo a él lo miré tirado, lo miré boca abajo, y yo nunca miré un arma al lado de él. Yo nomás lo miré a él, encuerado, y balanceado, es lo único que yo miré.
And what, again, what I demand is the knife that supposedly he had on him, all I saw was him shot dead, and, and practically with no clothes on. So she's going to close, just to say, we will actually continue this conversation, there was a massive amount of human rights and civil rights violations, including the fact that the police department had a press conference at 10:00 PM, and didn't bother to tell her her son was dead until 3:00 in the morning? That is completely outrageous. This community was treated like trash, and his body was treated like some dead dog. Actually, dogs are treated better, because people actually love dogs. So this is completely outrageous, and we as a community, as community organizations, will ensure there's justice, not only for Francisco, but ensuring that this police department no longer has the right to answer any more wellness calls and murder people that are in emotional distress. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony. For the additional individuals that are here for citizen comment, we'll, we'll have a chance to provide that testimony to the city council at the conclusion of business on our formal meeting. We'll now move on. Next on our agenda, city clerk will read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G306 and 6310 through 6320, S43459 through 43529, and resolutions number 21533 through 21540.
All right, thank you. There are no meeting minutes for approval today. We'll now move on to boards and commissions. Is there a motion on mayor's boards and commission nominations as corrected?
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commissions nomination as corrected.
Is there a second? There is a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. City council board and commission nominations. unanimously. City council board and commission nominations?"
"Motion to approve city council boards and commissions nominations."
"Is there a second? There's a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. It appears that there are many members of the public here to be sworn in for service on boards and commissions, so I'll come to my right, your left on the floor, and swear these individuals in, and then afterwards, if you'd come behind the dais so that council members can thank you in advance for your service." "Please raise your right hand, aye, and state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of..."
"The office of..."
"...according to the best of my ability. So help me God, you're official. Thank you very much for your service in advance. Thanks so much." "All right, now we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda, which are liquor license applications. Vice mayors, there are an omnibus motion on liquor license applications."
"Motion to approve items three through 16, except item 16."
"Motion to approve. We have many cards. It looks like they're all in favor of the motion. Are there any comments from members of this council? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Those items pass unanimously. Next, we'll move on to item number 16. Item number 16 is a proposed liquor license in District 3 for Centerfold Cabaret. Staff is recommending disapproval of this item. I'll now turn to our professional staff and see if they have a presentation on why they are recommending disapproval, and we'll see if there are any comments from the applicant. Please, Ms. Archibald."
"Mayor, members of the council, my name is Denise Archibald with the city clerk department, and with me is Jessica Breedlove with the prosecutor's office. This request is for an ownership and location transfer of a Series 6 bar license for a topless bar doing business as Centerfold Cabaret. This location was previously licensed for liquor sales until January of 2017 and does not have an interim permit. Consideration may be given to the applicant's personal qualifications and to the location. Three letters protesting the issuance of this license have been received and are on file in the office of the city clerk. The letters are from local businesses who are concerned with the location. Staff recommends disapproval of this liquor license application based on neighborhood protests and based on a police department recommendation for disapproval."
"Thank you very much. At this time, are there any questions for our professional staff on that recommendation? I'll now turn to the applicant and see if they'd like to make any comments. David Dow, the attorney for the applicant, is here. Mr. Dow, would you like to provide testimony? And then also, Jack Garrison is here in favor of the liquor license. Mr. Dow, good to see you."
"Thank you, Your Honor. David Dow, on behalf of the applicant, Peoria Ave LLC. My address is 3104 East Camelback, Phoenix 85016. We are here today to ask for the approval of a liquor license for a new owner to open a cabaret at 2031 West Peoria. I know there's some resistance normally to a strip club, which this is, for this type of entertainment. There is a natural reaction, that we understand. Less than 180 days has passed since the prior liquor license operator operated at this premise. Therefore, under Arizona law, there's a presumption, a rebuttable presumption, that the liquor license interest will serve the public convenience and that the issuance is in the best interest of the community. Peoria Ave itself is capable, reliable, and a qualified entity managed by professional citizens from Arizona. Peoria LLC will provide individuals with jobs while simultaneously ensuring that the community is taken care of. Peoria Ave is managed by Jeff Auerzlin and Patrick Zanzuki. Both men are capable, qualified, and reliable. Jeff and Patrick are currently on other approved Arizona liquor licenses. The premises itself, when these two individuals have now taken over as the management for this new entity, did achieve a sexually-oriented business license with Jeff and Patrick as the managers of Peoria LLC. The city did not disapprove it for that particular side of the business. Jeff Auerzlin is the only one who owns more than 10% of this LLC. The police department report wrongly focuses on individuals that own 7% or less than 10%. The reason that this is wrong is because the capable, reliable, and qualified, under the liquor department and law tests, provide for a 10% threshold. Only Mr. Auerzlin has over 10% of the ownership in this. There are virtually no statements in the police report about Mr. Auerzlin. He has no violations. He's been on a liquor license for quite some time, and in fact, if Mr. Auerzlin at his place, he has no incidents, and they have what's called a no-hit policy. We now, and quite frankly, in the background, it's a fair consideration that there was previously a fireman who was unfortunately killed at this premises, and we're all... we are new ownership. It doesn't... it shouldn't be attributed to us, but we are sorry about that. I frankly have a lot of fireman relatives. My uncle was a relative, or was a fireman for over 40 years. I understand the natural reluctance, why that would be an issue here. It is a terrible situation that did occur there, but we are new ownership, and we don't have any sort of background like this. There are certain objections by some of the letters. We understand that certain areas, that the area up there has been a rougher area at times, but it actually got a little worse once this business closed because transient started living there and started being outside of the premises, and there were some incidents that occurred there after we took over. We also understand that we are not West Coast Sports Group, which was the prior license holder. We have no relationship with that entity. There is none, no police department assertion of that. They are entirely separate individuals, entirely separate LLCs, and we believe that we would do a fair job of serving the public convenience, as Mr. Auerzlin has had a strict no-hit policy at his procedure with his bouncers and doormen, and doesn't have this type of record. He would be an appropriate person to be the majority, or at least the plurality partner, and run the place."
"Thank you, Mr. Dow. I wonder if you have any final comments. All right, good. Is Mr. Garrison here? Did you wish for..."
"Yes, he is. Yes, he is."
"Would Mr. Garrison like to provide testimony in favor of the proposed liquor license?"
"Good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you for hearing me out. My name is Jack Garrison. I'm an Arizona native. I graduated from Deer Valley High School here in town, and earned my associate's degree in fire science. I have been a firefighter since 2005. I have worked for Mr. Auerzlin and Ms. Martori for the last 19 years at a different organization that they own as a doorman, and in those 19 years, I have not had any complaints filed against me or my staff. We are trained by the laws that are defined by the Liquor Board, and we also go through a National Security Council training that is done for bouncers regarding the state of law, of what's reasonable force, and how to handle it and those such. One thing that I applaud these owners for is their commitment to safety of not only their staff, but the patrons that come in. One example is that they have organized a cab company that come outside and provide services for patrons that need a ride home. If they aren't able to pay for these services, the club's policy is, is that we will take care of the bill for them to ensure that they get home safely. To me, that shows a great responsibility in the ownerships for the safety of the public. Mr. Auerzlin, his approach to his staff and customers is that of a hands-on owner, which is what is available now with the process, the bar that I work for now. Area others that have been purchased are done by conglomerate groups that are outside the state, that don't have hands-on experience. These owners are in-state. They have hands-on, daily knowledge of the business going on, and I do believe that is a huge representation of not only what's going on in the public, for our safety, for their bar, and for the patrons that come in, and for the staff that work there. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time for delivering testimony."
"Thank you very much, Mr. Garrison, for that testimony. I'll now turn to Phoenix Police Detective Eric Brendel to see if you have any testimony you'd like to provide this council in opposition to this liquor license. By the way, that will be followed by Lance Van Houten from Ping. Detective."
"Mayor, members of council, I'm Eric Brendel. I represent the Phoenix Police Department, Desert Horizon Precinct. I appreciate the time that you're allowing me to speak on this application. Patrick Zanzuki and Jeffrey Auerzlin are both managing members for the Peoria Avenue LLC who applied for a person and location transfer for a Series 6 liquor license for the Centerfold Cabaret at 2031 West Peoria Avenue. We're not just talking about one owner in Patrick Auerzlin. The ownership is divided in Peoria Avenue LLC amongst nine members. Jeffrey Auerzlin, Fred Martori, Michael Pavan, Patrick Zanzuki, Robert Zanzuki, Timothy Zanzuki, Frank Zanzuki, James Zanzuki, and William Zanzuki. The managing members that are identified in the operating agreement for the Peoria Avenue LLC are both Jeffrey Auerzlin and Patrick Zanzuki. The police department recommends disapproval on this liquor license based on concerns in the following areas. The ownership within the Peoria Avenue LLC, the repeated violation of prohibited sex acts at other establishments owned by members of the Peoria Avenue LLC, location concerns, and lastly, the failure of the Peoria Avenue LLC to fully disclose financial documentation. Pursuant to Arizona Vice Statute 4-203, a spirits liquor license shall be issued only after the satisfactory showing of the capable qualifications or liability of the applicants. Currently, several of the Zanzuki family members in the Peoria Avenue LLC have ownership of one or more adult businesses in the interstate. Many of these locations have passed or pending violations of liquor laws which include prohibited sex acts. The highlighter is one of these locations, and is owned by four Zanzuki family members, Frank, James, Timothy, and William. Each of these individuals does have an ownership in the Peoria Avenue LLC. Let's discuss some of the business practices at the other locations. In August 2015, the highlighter was the focus of undercover operation by the Phoenix Police Department Vice Unit. At the conclusion of the investigation, and in addition to individual charges against the dancers of the Department of Liquor, against the Department of Liquor Compliance Unit charged the business administratively with 13 counts of prohibited sex acts and one count of solicitation prostitution on the premises. This resulted in a $4,000 fine. In March of 2016 and October 2016, the department conducted their own separate undercover operation after receiving ongoing complaints at the highlighter. 36 counts of prohibited sex acts and one count of the failure to maintain reliability, capability, and qualifications were submitted to the Department of Liquor Compliance Unit. These charges are currently pending administrative action. According to investigations, both the Phoenix Police Department Department of Liquor, the prohibited sex acts which occurred at the highlighter were so numerous and so blatant that the owners, managers, and employees either knew or should have known that this was happening. This suggests the dancers have little to no oversight, both of which are the responsibility of the owners. Patrick Zanzuki is the managing member of Peoria Avenue LLC. Through testimony at a recent Liquor Board hearing, Patrick himself identified himself as a past and current consultant to a number of topless establishments in the state owned by his family. Specifically, one of these establishments he consults for was the highlighter during the period of these violations. When Patrick describes his role as consultant, he said he visits the businesses often. He observes the operation. He spends time there, and he handles matters the owners don't have time to do. It's important to know that if Patrick Zanzuki was a consultant doing all these things, he should have been reasonably aware of the repeated violations at the highlighter, and therefore advise the owners to take corrective action. His failure to do so brings into question his own reliability, capable, and qualification. Patrick Zanzuki is also a co-owner of the Pink Rhino, which was granted a liquor license in December of 2016. In January 2017, Patrick Zanzuki submitted false and misleading documents to the Department of Liquor referenced the status of the Pink Rhino liquor license status. Charges were submitted to the department's compliance unit, however, were dismissed after this report had already been completed and submitted to council. Since that time, Investigator Williams from the Department of Liquor has conducted a follow-up interview with Mr. Patrick Zanzuki. As a result, Investigator Williams obtained additional evidence that substantiates the original charge, therefore submitting another departmental report. The outcome of this is not yet known at this time. There are also concerns with location. Under Arizona Vice Statutes 4-201, the applicant bears the burden of proof showing that the public convenience required and the best interest of the community will be substantially served with the issuance of the license. The Centerfold Cabaret is located within a challenged community that is in transition. Historically, its surrounding area has been plagued by high crime rates, poverty, and transient issues. Currently, the rate of both violent crimes and property crimes in this area are nearly three times the city's average. To approve this liquor license would not be in the best interest of this community. Lastly, as of this date, members of the Peoria Avenue LLC have failed to fully disclose financial documentation as required by ARS 4-202F. The request for very specific information had been made on more than one occasion. However, the members of Peoria Avenue LLC continue to provide incomplete info. Based on all the aforementioned reasons, members of the Peoria LLC have failed to demonstrate a satisfactory showing of reliable, capable, and qualified. For these reasons, the granting of a liquor license would not be in the best interest of the community. Thank you."
"Thank you very much, detective. Our next speaker will be Lance Van Houten from Ping, and then followed by Marcia Viedmark."
"Thank you very much. Again, I'm Lance Van Houten, here on behalf of Ping and our parent company, Carson Manufacturing, to speak in opposition to this liquor license application. Ping sits on approximately 50 acres in this area, but within those 50 acres, our main entrance to the facility sits immediately across from the Centerfold's location. So this affects us greatly, and we're strongly opposed. The claim was made earlier that since the Centerfold's location closed for business, had its liquor license taken away and was closed for business in early 17, that the area's gotten better, and I'm here to state that we're uniquely qualified to say we have well-documented experience that it's been quite the opposite. And this is outlined in the letter we submitted for review. But since May of 2014 to the end of 16, while Centerfold was in operation, we had approximately 150 documented incidents. So, you know, these range from graffiti, break-ins to the cars of our employees and our guests at Ping, you know, intoxicated patrons that ended up on our property that were trespassing, things of a variety of different nature. And since January 2017, when Centerfold's closed, we've had three incidents of this type. So doing the math, we've gone from about five incidents a month to less than one. So we've seen a dramatic improvement since that this business has been closed, and so I think those numbers speak for themselves. And I guess, you know, lastly, the point I would make is that this was mentioned earlier as well. The reason this closed was this tragic incident with the fatal beating of a Phoenix firefighter at that location. With, you know, an adult-oriented business with a liquor license, so I feel it defies logic to put the same business in the same location. You know, it's just gonna result in many of the incidents we've seen in the past. So with that, I thank you for your time."
"Thank you so much for your testimony, and I just want to make sure to clear the record that the tragedy involved, did not involve a Phoenix firefighter. I believe it was a Daisy Mountain..." I believe it was a Daisy Mountain Fire District firefighter. Tragedy nonetheless. Marcia Viedmark is next, followed by Letitia Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this time. Marcia Viedmark, 2001 West North Lane, Phoenix, Arizona. I have been a business owner in the area for 40-plus years, longer than many of you have lived, and I watched the area grow and develop and become wonderful, helping to build that. I also, in the last several years, have watched it absolutely become a frightening, declining, negative area in which to exist. We own two acres, we operate a business with 40 employees, we are proud and thrilled with our area and our city. We contribute our time and efforts because we want to be a positive impact to our community. I'm going to simply ditto many of the things that you just heard Lance speak because I'm directly behind this property, one street south of it. I had, before it closed during the operation, so many disgusting, absolutely indescribable events on my property, of the leftover results of the patrons of the Centerfold's, at least while it was operating, this took place, before it didn't, and when it stopped, it finished, it did no longer take place. We had the remains of what was after, beyond extended drinking, sexual activities on our property with disgusting drug paraphernalia, sexual activity, evidence, toys and all on our property, disgusting feces over our property. It was sick. And to see that happen to our area, that we, with, and I'll segue here, mayor and council, you honored us with a revitalization designation a few years ago. I almost can cry. That was the most wonderful thing of hope for us because we saw we could rescue this area, we could bring it back to good, and you could be proud of North Mountain rather than be ashamed of it. And that was happening. We were making that happen. And honestly, the Centerfold's activity has, it brought great ruination to us. The hope that when January came in 17 and it closed, we took a breath, I attest to what Ping noted, the problems in our area stopped. The, it was so improved, we breathed a breath of hope, and to think that this would come back again is so destructive. We don't need that. We can be the manufacturing industrial community that we are designated to be. You can be proud of us. This liquor license will destroy it. I strongly oppose it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Viedmark, for your testimony and your leadership in the North Mountain community. Ms. Gonzalez, Letitia Gonzalez, followed by Leonard Griffin.
Hello, my name is Letitia Gonzalez. I am the property manager of 10623 North 18th Drive. We are to the west of 19th Avenue, and I am here to strongly oppose the liquor license for the sex-oriented business of Centerfold's. The reason for my opposition is because a lot of my tenants have complained that when they walk to the park, which is to the east of that establishment, they have to go through Peoria where this sex-oriented establishment is at. And it's unfair for the children and some of the young people, or even the older people, that they have to walk to this establishment to be a witness of, like Marcia was just explaining, some very explicit things that people do on that property and that location. I am very happy that this has been designated as a revitalization area, so we should continue to improve it and not allow this place to reopen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Griffin?
My name is Leonard Griffin. I'm the lead pastor of Covenant of Grace Christian Fellowship. We're located at 906 West Peoria, less than a mile to the west of the former Centerfold's. I've been the lead pastor there for 29 years since we started. We have worked with the community, both with business leaders and citizens and property owners over the last almost 30 years, to help revitalize the Sunny Slope community. I worked with Washington Elementary School District in helping getting the Mountain View School established. I've worked with the Sunny Slope Village Alliance in helping with the revitalization status of that area. We have recovery ministries that meet at our church almost continuously for the last 30 years that deal with addictions and specifically sexual addictions as well as others. We have ministry to the poor with food and clothing distribution, ESL classes for the immigrant community. We've tried to do everything we can to help the community improve, and like the rest of those that have speak, we strongly oppose this establishment. I find the idea that somehow this business is serving the needs or the best interests of the community, quite frankly, to be ludicrous. It has no benefit to the community whatsoever, so I strongly oppose the approval of this license. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's all the cards we have on this item. The case is in District 3. So Councilman Stark, I'll now turn it to you and see if you have any questions, or would you like to put a motion on the table?
I'd like to put a motion on the table. And first off, I want to thank North Mountain Business Alliance for coming down. You guys have done a lot of work in the area, and you really are working to improve the area. I also want to thank the police department for their extensive report. I think that helps a lot. I'm going to recommend denial. I do not think it's appropriate in this area, and I want to continue to see that area improved, and I just don't think this is the proper type of business or liquor license to have in the area. So I recommend denial.
All right, so a motion for denial. We have a second. The motion for denial, I believe, was based upon not only the neighborhood protests, but the testimony of the Phoenix Police Department. So a motion and a second. Any comments by members of this council on that motion? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so the motion for denial passed unanimously by this city council. I believe the applicant wants to continue. I guess I'll have an opportunity for a full hearing before the state liquor board, but make it clear that this council has strongly and unanimously sided to disapprove this liquor license. Okay, now move on on our agenda. Next item on our agenda concerns ordinances, resolutions, new business, planning, and zoning. Vice Mayor, do we have an omnibus motion on those items?
A motion to approve items 17 through 151, except the following. Item 17, 28, 51, 73, 78, 86, 87, 150, and 151. Items 50 and 121 have been continued to May 31, 2017, and excluding these items for public comment. Item 64, 85, 91, 106, 143, 150, and 151.
And did you include 39 in that? I didn't hear that.
I don't have 39.
Okay, 39 as well.
And 39.
Okay, that's the omnibus motion. Is there a second? Are there any comments or questions? Are there any cards on any of those items? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes, those items pass unanimously. It appears that the next item on the agenda is item number 17. Vice Mayor, is there a motion on item number 17?
I move item number 17.
We have a motion, we have a second on 17. Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so that item passes on a eight-to-one vote of the city council. Next item on the agenda is item number 28. Is there a motion on 28?
I move item number 28.
There's a motion and a second. This is a payment ordinance item for repair and maintenance of basketball backboards and rims. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Councilman Waring, please.
Ms. Inger Erickson, our parks director. Councilman Waring, do you have a question regarding?
Thanks, yeah, just real quick. So we have 66 rims citywide, is that right? And this is for four years for the $50,000.
Mayor and members of the council and Councilman Waring, that is correct. 66 rims throughout the gymnasiums, and this will be to get us to 2020.
2020, okay, thank you.
Are there any other cards on item number, are there any cards on item 28? Any additional comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor.
Did I hear a yes? I heard a yes, didn't I? Woo! Sorry.
Because one year was like $1,000 a rim. I was like, let's see, go like three states. Four years.
I heard a yes. It's happy, yes, and he's a yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so this council has unanimously supported repair of basketball backboards and rims in the city of Phoenix. All right, next item on the agenda is item number 39. Do we have a motion on 39?
I move a motion for number, item 39.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any cards on 39? Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes seven to two. Next item is item number 51. City clerk, would you please read the title on 51?
Item 51, ordinance G6310, an ordinance amending Phoenix City Code Chapter 43, Article 2, Section 43-10, contract authorizations, and Article 3, Section 43-11, available source selection methods to increase sourcing method thresholds, and administrative changes to align with other jurisdictions and increase staff efficiencies.
Okay, there a motion on item number 51?
Move approval 51.
Is there a second? There a second? Okay, excellent. Are there any cards on 51? Any comments or questions by members of our council? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item on our agenda is item number 64. Is there a motion on item 64?
Move approval of item 64.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Greta Rogers, did you have comments on those items?
My name is Greta Rogers. My reason for speaking on this item has more to do with the procrastination of this council in addressing things in a timely manner. That is your business. This agenda is 151 items long and 272 pages long. I needed a mule to carry it. This is all due to year-long procrastination, and I put the onus upon you, mayor, as the leader of this council and this city. Get your act together and move in a timely manner. I don't know why we are making a deal with the city of Maricopa for a consulting service. The amount of money in and of itself is not large, but it's these little drips of money cumulatively that put us in a financial tenuous position to do those things for this city and the citizens of this city that are long overdue and are needed and required. Get your act together.
Thank you very much. That's a question deserving an answer. But she manager, why are you recommending that we enter into an agreement with the city of Maricopa Cooperative Contract?
Thank you, mayor. It reads that way, but it's actually not an agreement with the city of Maricopa. What happened is we're in a consortium where we can use contracts that are procured by other agencies. The city of Maricopa did a proper procurement for executive-level consulting services. We're allowed to tie into that contract with your approval so that we can expedite our work to get these services. These services in this case are actually, this is like a temporary agency for executive-level services in effect what this company does.
All right, so we build upon someone else's RFP for efficiency of the city of Phoenix so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, if you will.
Exactly.
All right, so there was a motion on 64, there was a second, and there's a question, Council, Vice Mayor?
So, understanding and entering this agreement, but have we vetted the vendors or reviewed the vendors to see if they're in line with our process?
Yes, that's part of the, that's part of the way that we sign on to these is that the finance department reviews the procurement to make sure that the procurement was in order and that the firms are in order as well.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so that item passes unanimously. Next item is item number 73, artist design contract for Terminal 3 Modernization East Atrium. Do you have a motion on item 73?
Move approval.
Second. Do we have a motion? We have a second. Any comments or questions on that item? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that passed our city council by an eight-to-one vote. Item number 78 is next, foreign trade subzone expansion. Is there a motion on 78? There is a motion, there is a second. Any comments or questions in this council? Councilman Gallego.
This concerns a vote that will impact the city of Glendale, and I just wanted to thank staff for confirming that the city of Glendale was very supportive because when we make decisions that impact other elected officials, I think it's important that we reach out and get their approval. So I'm glad that we did in this case.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of the council? Are there any cards on that item? Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes on a seven-to-two vote of the city council. Next item on our agenda is item number 85. Is there a motion on 85?
Move approval of 85.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Leonard Clark, are you still here? Is Mr. Clark here? He wanted to provide testimony on item number 85? Okay, then we'll go ahead. He marked his card neutral on the item. Roll call.
DeCiccio, Gallego, Noakowski, Stark, Valenzuela, Waring, Williams, Pastor, Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that was unanimous vote. Next item is item number 86. Item number 86 is Terminal 3 concession program strategy and request to issue revenue contract solicitation. Do we have a motion on 86? Councilman Valenzuela, this is in your subcommittee.
Yes, mayor, my motion is to approve. We did talk about this thoroughly in the Downtown Aviation Innovation Economy Subcommittee, not once but twice, and we bring it with unanimous support, and my motion is to recommend this.
There's a motion in favor of item number 86. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. We have numerous cards in favor, not wishing to speak, in favor of the item. Greg Parides, Gonzalo de la Melena, Carrie Pfeffer, Naven Sirona, I apologize for butchering the name, Holly Ritchie, Gregory Torres, Teresa Dominguez, and Francisco the name, Holly Ritchie, Gregory Torres, Teresa Dominguez, and Francisco Dominguez. One more card, John Schofeld as well. Are there any other cards on this item? I'll now turn to members of the council. Any comments or questions by members of the City Council on item number eighty-six? Councilman DeCiccio, oh, Councilman Stark first, and then Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Thank you. I know you guys have done a lot of good work on this, but could we have city staff come up and just kind of highlight the points? Because this report doesn't give us a lot of information as far as what's going to be proved first, how you're going to do it, square footages, those kinds of things, because I know this is a really aggressive contract, so I'm just...
Blue.
Mayor, members of the council, I have with me aviation staff, and I turn it over to Mr. Bennett, the Aviation Director, to give you a brief overview.
Mayor, members of the council, as I understand, the question is about the allocation of the points for evaluation.
And just what, what you anticipate for the phasing of it. So, I mean, as they come in, do you have points that they have to, I mean, not points, but they've got to get X amount constructed by what time? I'm trying to understand.
Timeline?
Yeah, timeline.
The timeline for implementation of the program.
Right.
Very well. The timeline for implementation is that our schedule is pending council approval. We will issue this RCS within the next couple of weeks, and then we anticipate a early fall submission of proposals. Then there will be evaluation committees that will evaluate each of the proposals, and then we will be back in front of council, hopefully, by the end of the year with a recommendation on various packages. And then if council approves that, then in early 2018, we would be executing the contracts. Then they would start working with our construction contractor that is doing the Terminal Three remodel so that we can have these restaurants and retail outlets available for the public when the building opens later in 2018.
So, what's in, as far as construction, so how much do, do they have to deliver as far as restaurant, retail, square footage? I'm just trying to understand how it's going to coincide with the construction or modernization of Terminal Three.
If, if you don't mind, I can give you some details. I'll pass it over to Chris Madsen, our Deputy Aviation Director of Business and Property. She can give you that, those intimate details.
Thank you.
Oh, Mayor Stanton and Councilwoman Stark, so all of the locations will not be required to be built out. They're planned to be phased, and so in the solicitation, we will let the operators know exactly how much space needs to be built out, and it will not be a hundred percent of the space. So, that will be disclosed in the solicitation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
To, to that point...
Vice Mayor.
I have a question about the square footage. When will the square footage be finalized? I have heard by several people regarding the square footage and not really having a understanding about what will be the final square footage and what they will be competing against or with.
Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, the square footage is going to be disclosed as soon as we release it in the solicitation, which is coming out in the next week, I would say. We have been working with our consulting team to identify exactly how much square footage needs to be built out, because the space has been planned for future opportunity, not for day-one opening. So, some of the space will be less than fifty percent that will be required to be built out, and then the back of the house could be used for other things. So, that will be all identified, and we've had numerous conversations. That has been a question from several operators, so we have been trying to talk through what their concerns are with them on that space.
And then my second question is, why would we need a twenty-four-hour stand? Because my understanding in the industry that it's very hard to have a twenty-four-hour business open within the airport, and it's very hard for retention of employees, so I want to know if it's possible to take out the twenty-four-hour piece.
So, Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, so we have identified different locations. I would have to check exactly how many we have said have to be open twenty-four-seven, but we do have services and we need amenities open for the passengers that are coming through. I don't have the exact number. I think it's just one location, but I would need to check and get back to you.
Go ahead.
And Mayor to Vice Mayor Pastor, it is very standard industry practice. In fact, we do it currently in our existing terminals to have outlets available for the customer twenty-four hours a day, because we have customers in each of our terminals all night long, and it's very important that they have access to certain services, food and beverage, or whatever they may need, as, as they're in there in overnight hours.
Am I, okay, so my question to that, or my response to that, is if a business closes, say, at twelve o'clock or one o'clock, and reopens at five o'clock, there's only a few hours of closure, wouldn't the, the kiosks, or not the kiosks, the vending machines at that moment come in handy where they could purchase a beverage and possibly a sandwich? I mean...
Mayor to Vice Mayor Pastor, we would have some vending opportunities, but we think that it's also very important to have a customer-facing touch with the, with those passengers that may be in that building. In fact, you know, the aviation industry, while not a hundred percent on time all of the time, we are, we are often known for flights that don't work on time and schedules that get delayed, and we even have protocols in place where we have to notify concessions, sometimes at the last minute, of major disruptions where we request that they stay open, additional outlets stay open in order to serve the customer. I just, it's not a good level of service to not have some outlet available for our customers in our buildings all night long.
So, I'm still going to challenge you on that, only because I've heard from operators that it's very difficult to retain staff during that time, and it's very difficult. There's a high turnover that happens, and it ends up costing the employers or the operators more, and I guess at that, that type of situation, if we really want to look at it in a broad sense, an innovative, in an innovative way or innovation, would be to maybe then at that moment, set up an area for some food trucks to operate during those times. But I am just repeating concerns that I have heard from operators about that piece. So, I guess my question is, can you re-look at that, or do, does it have to be, do I, do I have to give a, a suggestion for you to look at it, or can it be looked at and we can move this through?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Pastor, certainly staff will review any questions the council has, and, and certainly that's a thing, because that can be reviewed while folks are preparing their proposals to give back to us, that we can create some optionality to evaluate the impacts of not having service open or not.
Okay. I'm just, I just wanted for you to, for here. The other one, the other piece, I can't remember, I've been on several committees this week, and one of them was regarding sustainability and regarding recycling, composting, and my question is, is that, do operators do that naturally, or is that, is that part of the airport policy?
Mayor to Vice Mayor Pastor, we have an overall diversion policy at the airport, and we actually achieve some very high diversion rates, and our tenants work with us very closely. So, it is our policy, and we make the provisions to recycle as much of the waste that is coming out of the buildings as possible.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
Thank you very much. Thelma Williams, Councilwoman Williams, I think had another question or comment to that point.
Oh, well, let me comment on the diversion. I know that Public Works is very proud of the cooperation that we get from the airport. That's relatively new, within the last year, eighteen months, and you're helping tremendously, so we appreciate all that. I, I'm going back to having an operation twenty-four hours. We are a world-class operation. You're absolutely correct that there are people in the terminals around the clock for various reasons, whether it's snowing and they can't get a flight into Chicago, or just delays, whatever. I think it's very important that we have people there serving. If we're going to be a friendly airport, you provide friendly service, and a kiosk can't do that. So, I disagree with the Vice Mayor on this. I think it's very important that we remain a top-level airport, and that I am sure that there might have to pay a little more for that shift, but I think you could probably find some people to work it. I just think we have quality people out there now, and I want to see that continue. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman DeCiccio, any comments?
Yeah, well, this shouldn't come as an unexpected question. I mean, I'm going to be asking about the add-on that was done at the last minute at the subcommittee. Could you read that on the union language, please? Could you just read that into the record, that's all? Was that a staff-generated question? I mean, was that a staff-generated thing, or was that a council-generated?
So, it was me who generated it.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking when I heard the Snyder remark here. It wasn't a last-minute response, but it was, but...
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, it was a backroom deal, but let's go ahead and do this.
There is no backroom deal.
Sal, you're not even on the subcommittee.
Well, hey, wait a second.
You create your own narrative.
Let me ask the question. I just wanted to read it into the record.
Yeah, you should.
I want the public to know what's really going on behind closed doors here. Go ahead, read it in.
There's nothing happening, closed doors, and...
Let, let them, let them read it.
Read it into the record.
I will read it. Do you currently have an agreement in place that would prohibit a labor organization, prohibit a labor organization from engaging in a strike, picketing, or conducting other economic actions at the proposed concession operations? If yes, please list the labor organization and the date the agreement was executed. We want seamless service. Why wouldn't we want this in here?
What's the purpose of it?
The purpose is to have seamless service for the airport not to be disruptive, specifically when we are hiring or going into a non, a new contract, and making sure that we are going to have seamless services.
Let me tell the public what it's really about. It's about an intimidation. It's never was added before. It takes a clean process at the City of Phoenix and makes it dirty. That's what's occurring here. And, and, look, I admit the fact, I'm in the minority up here, and that union control of the City Council, City of Phoenix, is starting to happen, and what you're going to look at twenty years from now, you're going to start asking the question, you're all going to ask the question, and you're going to say, wow, how did we get here? And you can look to today, and you can look to a situation that occurred a couple of years ago, where something similar like that happened, when they started adding this kind of language in there, that is meant to basically intimidate business owners. That's what it's about, and I, I've accepted that, but I'm going to keep talking about it. Thank you, Mayor.
So, let me make it clear.
Thank you very much, Council, Vice Mayor.
This is not intimidation. This is not backroom deals. This is language that is across the United States at all airports, plus, I spoke to industry, and industry is okay with it. So, it is not a backroom deal. Of course, Sal is always making a narrative as to why he can't support it, and here we go again.
All right, so, is there any additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Williams, please.
In addition to what the Vice Mayor just said, staff, when you are reviewing the proposals, this is not a question that carries any weight in consideration of, bless you, and by the committee that reviews this. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, that is correct.
And it clearly states that, I believe.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, the RFP will reflect that this is not, is not being considered by the panel or in the points to be awarded.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of the council?
Just one quick comment, because I, I chair this particular subcommittee, and I take pride in how we do business at the subcommittee and here at the, the full council, and how we do business as a council. Our meetings are incredibly transparent. In fact, if someone is watching Channel Eleven right now, they will watch this live, they can livestream this, this meeting. The conversation that we had in the subcommittee both, twice, is archived. People can check it out on, on YouTube. I'm proud of how we do business here at the City of Phoenix. In fact, voting to make it such a transparent process was something I supported. I don't know if you supported it, Sal, but that's not how we do business. Your, your narrative, your, the way you paint the City of Phoenix, I'm, I have the floor.
Oh, that is the way I paint you and others on the council. That are pushing these agendas.
All right, Council Valenzuela, there's a floor, and then Councilman DeCiccio, you have a chance to respond. Councilman Valenzuela, please.
Sal, you, Sal's been on this council for probably three times longer than I have, and he still doesn't understand the quorum of how we do business here on the council. So, it bothers me, when we do have someone on this council who constantly calls on the demise of the city, for those who are represented here, and many people are in this audience, represent a corporation. Can you imagine, can you imagine if you had a board member representing your corporation who constantly calls on the demise of your organization, who's constantly talking about how unethical the organization is? It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. The meetings that Mr. DeCiccio was talking about is, was out in the open, full transparency. In fact, you can look up those meetings on YouTube. You can choose to do that, or you can choose to open his next email, which paints the City of Phoenix in a negative light, again. I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish. You notice all the cards that the mayor has read off? Leaders in this particular industry is supportive of this motion, as I am, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, just a quick response.
Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Just a quick response. I don't represent the politicians. I don't represent the insiders. I represent the public. My only job...
Bar politician.
Is Councilman DeCiccio the floor, and then Vice Mayor, you want to speak?
That's it. And I'm going to call it out when I see things like that, and that's just what I'm going to do, and I'm going to continue to do that, and I'm not going to stop doing that, because I made this clear to others on this council, Danny and others, that I don't represent them, and I'm not going to be part of these kinds of deals, just not going to be there. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilwoman Gallego, please.
Thank you. Earlier today, the Councilwoman Valenzuela won a wonderful award, the Sentinel Award, for his advocates for entrepreneurs and small business, and Sky Harbor also won an award for advocate for the state of Arizona, but one of the things, again, recognized was helping out small and local businesses and being a great employer. It was a great recognition from the business community, and I think there are, there are things we've been discussing here today that will further that. So, we have today a structure that will allow small and local businesses to compete, to continue to get that great local flavor, where you can visit a bunky boutique at the airport or a great local restaurant, and continue to, your, your great travel experience in Phoenix, you'll get that local flavor at the airport, but we also take pride in being the friendliest airport, and that means being a great employer. That means renew, keeping, maintaining employees. You need to have good compensation, you need to have good benefits. We want healthy employees with health care, and that's part of our brand here in Phoenix. So, I think what the, I'm not on the subcommittee, but I appreciate the work they did to ensure that we have business partners at the airport who are top employers. One of the things that's also very important to me is our city ordinance on equal pay, and I'll have some comments on the next item about this particular item. A question for our staff, we have traditionally had a question about how this, the people who are applying maintain practices of equal pay and how they further equal pay as a policy. Will this be, that question be in this process as well?
Mayor, to Councilwoman Gallego, yes, that will be in this solicitation.
Wonderful. And then I was, in... Wonderful. And then I was interested in Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Pastore and Councilwoman Williams' discussion of sustainability. And I can't remember, do we ask about what the sustainability practices are of the business partners?
Mayor and Councilwoman Gallego, yes, it is in part of the criteria that we do ask what sustainability measures that they take in their build-out and construction and operation.
Wonderful. So we'll continue to, as we select these important business partners, to further the goals and values of our city. Wonderful. And I look forward to supporting this item and the strong support we've seen from both partners who work at the airport and the business community.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of this council? Okay, the motion is in favor of item eighty-six. There is a second roll call.
DeCiccio.
Nope.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, the item passes on a seven-two vote before the city council. Now move on to item number eighty-seven. Item number eighty-seven is Terminal Four Retail Concession Phase Two Revenue Contract Solicitation Award Recommendation. Councilman Valenzuela, do you have a recommendation on item eighty-seven?
Second.
We have a motion in favor. We have a second in favor, not wishing to speak unless necessary. Greg Parities, Carrie Pfeffer, Naveen Sharama, Polly Ritchie, Teresa Dominguez, Francisco Dominguez, and John Shuffell. Okay, is there any, are there any other cards on the item? I'll now turn to members of the council. Are there any comments or questions on item eighty-seven? Councilwoman Gallego.
I mentioned in my last comments that we look at our business partners and what their practices are in equal pay, and I just wanted to compliment some of the businesses who did a great job on this question, who talk about annually reviewing, or even more often, compensation to ensure there's not a pay gap. We had a business that signed the White House Equal Pay Pledge, I assume under the previous administration. There is, they talked about the diverse boards and management, women, people of color, in helping. That has shown a correlation with reducing pay gaps and really having good compensation practices with strong benefits. So I want to thank the companies that put a lot of effort into that question. I really appreciate it. There were also some companies that said that we put up a poster on equal opportunity in the break room, which I think is required by federal law, but if that did it on its own, we would not have a pay gap. And so I appreciate the companies that go above and beyond and did a great job on answering that question.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, any other comments by members of the council on item eighty, on item eighty-seven? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Nope.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item eighty-seven passes on a seven-two vote before this city council. Next item on the agenda is item number ninety-one. We have a motion on item number ninety-one.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item eighty-one. Opposed, not wishing to speak, I'll leave it up to you whether you do want to speak or not, Luis Gomez and Dale Zeitlin, opposed to the proposal. Any other cards on this item? Okay, we have a motion in favor of ninety-one. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastore. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes, I believe unanimously. Ms. Greta Rogers, do you have a comment on the next item? If you'd please come forward. Is there a motion on one oh six?
Move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second? There is a second. Ms. Rogers, item one oh six.
Before I comment on one oh six, Mr. DeCiccio, as a citizen in your district, you'll have room to sermonize and complain. When you get up in the morning and come to the subcommittee meeting that you've been a member of now for a long time, and you choose to sit at home, probably in your boxers, having another cup of coffee and taking it by phone, that is irresponsible, and you don't deserve to be on this body. Now, one oh six. Thank goodness, someday in the next proposed three years, we will have Forty-Eighth Street from Baseline Road south to the circle where you can either go to the Point Hotel or continue south into Owatuki. It's our only north-south arterial in Owatuki that takes us out to the greater community, aside from I-ten. This has been a private street for as long, probably, as it's been in existence. It's in a dreadful condition. The median boulevard is nothing but a collection of weeds and scrub. I look forward to this great improvement, and I hope, probably against hope, that the three-year projected timeframe for completion from beginning to end will be able to be achieved. And I hope in the doing so, you take out the stupid boulevard and make it three lanes each way from the Point Circle north to Baseline Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Councilwoman DeCiccio, some of her comments were personal nature, and if you had a chance to respond to that.
There's no response on that, just more electioneering stuff.
All right, there's a motion on one oh six and a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Pastore. Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number one forty-three. Okay, item number one forty-three is on our planning and zoning agenda. Hold on, let me try to find it in my book here. What's that? Okay, thank you. All right, item number one forty-three, concerns of proposed rezoning application for the northwest corner of Mayo Boulevard and Scottsdale Road. The order of business here will be, our planning director, Alan Stevenson, will give a short staff report, and then we'll see if there are any questions for Mr. Stevenson, then we'll hear from members of the community, and then we'll see if there's any motion for members of the city council. So without further ado, Mr. Stevenson, please give us your report on item number one forty-three.
Mayor, members of council, as noted, this is a request to rezone the northwest corner of Mayo Boulevard and Scottsdale Road to allow a major amendment to the Paradise Ridge Plan Community District for a planned unit development that's a mix of primarily C-two uses, but does also include an indoor shooting gallery. The Desert View Village Planning Committee recommended approval, per the staff stipulations, by a six-to-one vote. The Planning Commission also recommended approval pursuant to the Desert View Village Planning Committee recommendation by a seven-to-zero vote. Staff does recommend approval, per the Planning Commission vote and adoption of the related ordinance. I should note for the record on this item, this case was not appealed, so it can only be heard and discussed. It could be approved, denied, or continued. You can't make any substantive changes, you know, via stipulations or anything like that, because it was not appealed. If that's the wishes of the council, it would have to be withdrawn from the agenda and re-advertised for a public hearing in the future. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. At this time, any questions for our planning director? Councilwoman Gallego?
Would a shooting gallery typically be allowed in C-two?
Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, C-two is not a permitted use in our zoning district. It would take C-three zoning in order to do a shooting range.
Thank you.
All right, I think, any other additional comments for Mr. Stevenson, our planning director? Obviously, I'll have time to ask questions for him later if those come up. We'll now turn to members of the public who wish to provide testimony on item number one forty-three. Let's see, Mr. Nick Wood is representing the applicant. He should provide testimony, followed by Mr. Watson and Mr. Dixon.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Nick Wood. I'm with the law firm. I'm Snell and Wilmer. My address is One Arizona Center, and I represent the operators of C-two Tactical. While Noel is getting up our presentation, ah, here we go. Yeah, let's see here. There we go. The property is located at the southwest corner of Scottsdale Road and the one oh one. It's an older shopping center, excuse me, my allergies are driving me crazy. It's an older shopping center. It's located on land that is owned by the State Land Department. It's subject to a long-term ground lease. Bob Parsons from Go Daddy purchased the leasehold a couple of years ago. As you can see, it's one of the largest shopping centers, that's not a mall, in the state of Arizona, actually. It is, from one end to the other, it's about, from here to here, it's over a quarter of a mile, and it's right up against a freeway. We, of course, don't have any residential development anywhere near the site, and of course, we are located right here at this corner. And again, it's a former large box. Here's a little bit better indication of the number of big boxes that are located in the center. When we talked to staff about making this application, we could have gone for a C-three on just that area that you see with the green rectangle. However, you know, Mr. Parsons, of course, is dealing with, and we all know the issues with big boxes. He likes the idea of having a PUD on the property. It gives him the ability to come back, make applications through a formal amendment process to the PUD, but again, to make some changes in order to better compete in the marketplace in light of all of these big boxes. You can see that, you know, over here is Harkins in a corner, and we are about a quarter of a mile away on the other end. One of the things I was very excited about in representing this client is, as many of you know, I was born and raised in Wisconsin. So my dad's family was a farm family. We grew up hunting. I mean, every weekend in the fall, we were hunting, and until I was old enough to carry a gun, I was a dog, basically. I went out there and walked fence lines and did all those kinds of things. So I learned all about gun safety. Unfortunately, in the state of Arizona, there are no controls over who can own a gun, other than, you know, going through the federal requirements for background checks. There's no licensing, there's no training. People, if they get past the background checks, they can buy a gun. They don't know how to handle it. They don't know how to store it. You know, we read often about kids getting a hold of their parents or, you know, someone else's pistol or gun, and all of a sudden, it gets discharged and they're injured. So one of the things that this company does is they provide a significant amount of training and safety classes. Simulator classes, ladies' classes, youth safe handling, realtor safety, self-preparedness, private shooting lessons, private firearm consultation, private classes and training, family firearm safety, safe handling, and ASU criminal justice classes also participate in this program. There was a number of questions that were asked at every level. You know, have you vetted this client? What exactly is going to happen there? We're talking about guns. Are you going to have, for example, automatic weapons? Answer is no, there's no automatic weapons. We went and visited with the State Land Department to make sure they were okay with this, because they own the land. We met with Mr. Parsons. I mean, obviously, he's the landlord, but if there's anyone who's going to have a tremendous amount of liability, if there's problems with this site, Mr. Parsons, and he has a representative here tonight, I believe, in support of this. Controlled environment. You received a letter late Friday, toward the end of the day, from Ms. Longden, questioning whether or not, you know, we have taken proper protections regarding things like lead, lead in the air, et cetera, how that's handled. Well, OSHA, of course, controls that, and my client is here, and he can explain to you, if you like, how OSHA works, what kind of controls are in place, and how they comply with those controls. My client has two other facilities in the valley. There's one in Tempe. It's right off of I-ten and Warner, and there's another one out in Mesa. So again, they have experience with this. So we have a controlled environment. Baffled facility, noise. One of the questions is, what about noise in neighboring properties? We invited Councilwoman Waring to come and tour the facility in Tempe. Again, I think Councilwoman Waring can speak for herself. You can't hear anything outside of the area, which is the shooting area, which is right here. In fact, to get into it, you have to go through this double set of doors. So you can't get into this without the security of this door, and this door has to be closed, so there's not even any noise out here in the retail area. Projectile deflectors. One of the questions was, if someone shoots a round, can it go through the walls on either side? Can it go through the roof? Can it go beyond it? Is it safe? And the answer is yes. The way that this thing is designed, with all of the protections in place, there's no way that any round that's discharged in this facility can exit this shooting area. Air ventilation, as I mentioned, it's a controlled environment. We take care of any issues regarding any environmental hazards of any kind, whether it's from powder or anything else. The walls are CMU walls, fully grouted, and again, we have the sound foam for purposes of suppression. One of the questions was, what happens to the rounds? Well, at the end of the gallery, you have this big berm, which is rubber. It's a rubberized substance. The rounds will enter that substance. There is a machine that they own that will, you know, basically extract all of the lead in the rounds from time to time, so it doesn't build up. And then, of course, there are EPA requirements and hazardous waste requirements, and handling the lead, disposing of the lead, et cetera. And again, my client is here and can answer those questions for you. With respect to security, it's important for several things. Number one, you don't want people breaking into this location, stealing guns, et cetera. So this is an example of the type of security that they have in the Tempe site. Also, from the standpoint of operations, the folks who are their employees go through a very rigorous training process. So they learn to identify people who come in, and maybe, you know, they may have some emotional problems, some psychological problems. You know, the type of training that those who are in the liquor industry go through, well, ours is even more important than that, because we have people who are handling guns, we have people who are, you know, storing guns, leaving with guns, et cetera. So that is a very important component. Now, a C-two commercial, as Alan said, does not permit any kind of a shooting range. But what it does permit, as a matter of right, is the sale of guns. Now, Big Five sells guns and ammunition. Walmart does. Dick's Sporting Goods does. Pro Bass Shop sells guns. And there's also a gun sales facility in this, let me go back here. Okay, right here. Here's the Harkins Theater, right next door. This used to be a Sports Authority. Sports Authority sold guns, and they sold ammunition, right next door to the, to Harkins Theater, for years. Sports Authority went out of business. Now there's a new tenant moving in. It's Dick's Sporting Goods. And Dick's Sporting Goods sells guns and ammunition. What we're hopeful is that when they sell guns and ammunition, that they'll give the card, you know, to go down at the end of the other end of the shopping center and take a lesson, right? Learn how to use it, learn how to load it, learn how to unload it, learn how to store it, be safe with respect to this weapon. One of the questions that was asked, now again, we talked to State Land, we talked to Mr. Parsons. When we visited with the planning committee, we had two hearings, because it's a PUD, and the first hearing, there's a lot of questions, and we invited members of the planning committee to come and do a tour themselves. And one of the questions was, look, there's this, there's this movie theater down at the other end of the shopping center. Is that going to be a problem? Well, I mentioned to you that we have the facility in Tempe, and that facility is located right here. This is I-ten. Here's Warner. Here's a Dick's Sporting Goods. Here's the IKEA, which I think everybody recognizes. C-two is right here, and less than five hundred feet away is a Main Event. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with Main Event, but Main Event is a family facility. You have kids there all the time. There's bowling alleys, there's family activities. It's a large box itself, and we have a letter from them in support of C-two Tactical. They've had no complaints. They like having them as a neighbor. There's been no issue with respect to that. Another question that was brought up by the folks at the village was, can you give us any other examples where a gun club coexists with a movie theater? The answer is yes. The answer is yes. There's one here, the one at the top. This is in Edmonton, Canada. As you can see, there's a water park here. There's a gun club right here, similar to the one that you're considering tonight, and right upstairs, right above it, is a movie theater. Here in Honolulu, you have a gun club and a movie theater just right across this road. Here, you have, again, in Hockins, Illinois, you've got a movie theater and a gun club that are just basically right across the street from each other. As we, and that's it. So, as we went through this, we had, at the second hearing at the planning, at the village planning committee, the general counsel for Harkins showed up and basically said, look, we're concerned about having this gun club at the end of the shopping center, albeit it's down there, and we understand that we have, you know, a sporting goods store right next door to us, but we're concerned about losing customers. And, you know, again, we talked about the fact that, you know, we, the people who are typically members of our club are those who are serious about guns, they typically store them there, and so again, I think we responded to all of those issues. When we went to planning commission, no one showed up in opposition, no one appealed the case, and that's why we're here today. So, again, I, this is certainly an appropriate use. You have a user that has a tremendous history of safety, quality, bringing something that's important to the community, and that is training people how to use guns, and rather than letting people just go out and willy-nilly, buy them, carry them, store them, and do whatever they're going to do. And I also don't like the fact that people go out in the desert and shoot. I mean, I'd rather have them come into a facility like this. So, again, I apologize for the length of my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very much, Mr. Wood. Any questions for Mr. Wood at this time? Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Watson, William Watson, did you wish to provide testimony for the city council, or did Mr. Wood cover it? All right, Mr. Watson is in favor of the item. How about Mr. Dixon?
Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Doug Dixon. I'm a resident of Phoenix and thankful for the opportunity to speak in support of this new facility, hopefully will be built adjacent to where I live in Desert Ridge. I serve as the president of the Desert Ridge Community Association. I also serve on the Desert Ridge, or the Desert View Village Planning Committee, and in preparation for our review and vote on this item, I was invited to go down to the facility and tour the Tempe facility and did so, along with several other members of the village, and found this place to be exceptional. I've been in a number of different gun ranges. I've never been a member, but I've gone to different gun ranges, and this is by far, far and away, the most professional and unique facility that I've seen. I've talked with a lot of members of the Desert Ridge community since I'm in touch with them, very concerned about things that are happening in our community, and found virtually no opposition to this. And I've contacted many of you, and you know of my support, and I want to let you know that members of our community are in strong support of this facility, and I urge you to vote in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, Mr. Dixon. In favor, not wishing to speak, Ruth Shea, Terry O'Neil, David Carter, Whitney Satander, I believe, I apologize if I mispronounced, and Isaac Skug. Opposed to the proposal, Ms. Jennifer Longden, and Ms. Lee Jensen has conceded time to Ms. Longden, so you got a little bit longer. Ms. Longden, good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Longden, and I do live in council district number four. I'm a gun owner, and when time and my entertainment budget allow, I've been known to go to the range myself. I do not oppose gun ranges. I oppose this use of retail space. You received my letter on Friday, asking you to do additional research on the zoning application, and I'm here again to ask that you do that face-to-face. I'm only asking that you slow down and ensure that this precedent that will be set today by allowing this use of retail space is well researched and a thoughtful decision. I'm asking that you direct staff to more fully investigate the potential hazards and ensure that they have been mitigated. The staff report dated January 30th, 2017, contains the following. The request proposes the adaptive reuse of a distressed commercial building formerly known, or formerly the potato barn. The change for use to an indoor shooting gallery will utilize the distressed commercial building with a compatible use to those existing in the shopping center. Now, that shopping center contains a Baby's R Us, a Massage Envy, Harkins, White Chocolate Bar, none of which could reasonably consider distressed. And the space in question was originally a pottery barn that outgrew the space and moved to a larger nearby facility, and Whole Foods is right across the street. I can't see this being called a distressed property. The potato barn that followed the pottery barn was a furniture store, so I just don't see how these are compatible like-for-like. An indoor shooting range is not like a furniture store in terms of operation or potential impact, and it leads to a number of questions that you do not know the answers to, and respectfully should know the answers to before you vote to allow any shooting range to share an adjoining wall with Baby's R Us, or Massage Envy, or in any other retail space, the Sylvan Learning Center, or grocery store, or movie theater, whatever, that tend to be neighbors in this type of shopping center. How dangerous is the lead dust contamination of such an operation? How far does it spread? What are the studies that indicate? There are studies that indicate that this contamination is insidious. Knowing how dangerous lead is for pregnant women and children especially, should we not be absolutely certain of lead safety before allowing an indoor range? Not this one particular, but you're setting a precedent here where another might share an adjoining wall with Baby's R Us. They're going to share ventilation and waste disposal with stores that sell, who knows, you know, these kind of materials, and then offer a possibility of cross-contamination. So, what standards and safeguards are being put in place? What is the adequate filtration system to ensure that no contamination of surrounding businesses? Those aren't stipulated in this report. Now, when I sent you my original letter, I didn't know that C2 was the organization that had filed for this, and certainly, they show themselves to have a respectful business practice, but you're setting a precedent for who comes next, and you're not stipulating that these things are going to be important, and I think that is probably the greater issue. Shooting ranges tend to be standalone buildings in low-density locations for a reason. If this, if ones like this are questioned, are regulated on par with a furniture store, then who's ensuring there's an adequate backstop for projectile penetration? And are city inspectors ready to do those kind of inspections for a store that is sharing space that was once a furniture store? Is this the creative use that we want duplicated in our own neighborhoods? And are you ready for an indoor shooting range on your own corner? When I sent my letter on Friday, I didn't, again, know that C2 Tactical was the organization. And late Monday, Mr. Wood did contact me and invite me to visit C2 Tactical, and I wasn't able to take advantage of that invitation, but thank you for extending it. I think that that would be irrelevant. This isn't about C2 Tactical, it's about a precedent that is being set that would allow the next organization, who may not meet the standards that C2 Tactical holds for themselves, to set up a range, because we haven't codified appropriate stipulations and safeguards. So, I implore you to direct staff to more fully research the danger of lead dust and create stipulations for soundproofing and backstopping. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Longden. Kathleen Noble, did you wish to provide testimony in this item? You're also opposed to the item? Is Ms. Noble still here? Does Noble stay? Okay, so Ms. Kathleen Noble is opposed, and then David Noble, not wishing to speak, is also opposed to this, to this item. Mr. Wood, did you have something to add?
Do you have a chance to re-budge, Mayor?
Please. Very quickly, though, I gave you a lot of extra time at the beginning.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, with respect to slowing down, you know, we filed this case at the end of last summer. We had a neighborhood meeting in December. We not only invited the property owners within the 600 feet, but we also invited all of the tenants within the shopping center. And we met with tenants individually, especially those that are right physically next door. The questions regarding safety, you know, anything involving, anything that could be a hazard, you know, we went through, we sat with them, we showed them, we gave them the tours to show how there are no dangers. The facility that we have in Tempe is in a shopping center, and, let's see, I'm going the wrong way. I apologize, Mayor. There we go. So, C2 is right here in a strip shopping center, and actually, there's a lot of furniture stores in here. That's what most of these happen to be. Again, we have the main event right there. So, you know, with respect to all of the questions, and I think Ms. Longden raised a lot of good questions, and again, we've gone through a process where we've answered those at every step, at every level, and again, we are here with solid support from staff, from the village planning committee, from the planning commission, and we respectfully request your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that's all the cards we have. Oh, please, do you have a testimony?
I do.
Great to see you.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Terry O'Neil. I actually brought this application forward. I'd like to simply add, having heard the concerns of one resident, that C2 Tactical literally sets the benchmark on how a shooting range should be operated. When they build a building, it is literally a building inside a building. This large box store, which was originally a Borders bookstore, will actually get new walls, a new roof, and new air handling over the actual range portion. The air circulates through filters at twice the standard of a hospital operating room. It is one of the cleanest air environments you will ever enter. I have to be very honest. Please remember that this space can sell guns now. Under the current zoning, they can sell weapons and ammunition. I believe in what they're doing, C2, because of the safety that they bring. I do not, we're, let's be honest, Arizona has guns, we're going to buy guns, we're going to shoot guns. Let's do it somewhere safe. There's been a recent forest fire in the south end of the state caused by, it was actually a law enforcement officer discharging his weapon, that was set off. We don't need people going out in the desert shooting. We need them standing on a range where a range officer is assisting them, training them, and showing the safety, not only of firing the weapon, but storing and handling the weapon. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, I believe that's all the testimony we have on this item, both pro and con. And I'll turn to members of the council. Councilman Gallego?
Thank you. Appreciate that this has been going since summer. I did not end up on my radar screen until quite recently. I thought that the applicant made a very compelling proposal, and I'm inclined to support it, but I do want a little, I think it's fair to do a continuance and just do a little bit more additional research. There's a shooting range in my district where we're having some neighborhood conflicts, a very different situation, but it would be good, as we go down this path, to assume it won't be the last time we go down this path, and so, I would like to move for a continuance to the next formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council.
What date would that meeting be?
May 31st.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Gallego is requesting a continuance on this item to explore some of the issues addressed until May 31st. Is there a second on the motion to continue?
Oh, second.
Second on the motion to continue?
Move to approve.
All right, so I think on a continuance, that is a, I want to make sure I'm looking at our city attorney, that it's a procedural motion, that, can there be a substitute on that?
No, substitute only on a substantive motion, Mayor. The motion to continue takes priority first, that has to be addressed first, and then a primary motion and potentially a substitute would be allowed.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilman, please.
I just, I am going to second the motion for continuance out of disrespect for my colleague, and, you know, I don't necessarily see this as a bad case, but I do think that time is a good thing, and we're talking about a couple of weeks. So, you know, we obviously have some concerns from community members, and we should, you know, we should take our time, and so I would be supportive of the continuance.
So, Mayor?
Councilman Waring, please.
Thank you. I would just point out, a couple of weeks is easy to save when it's not your money. Obviously, these guys have been working this, paying attorneys, getting designs and so forth, going since last summer. I guess it's not my job to go around and tell everybody, hey, there's this case coming up months from now, but this has been out there for a long time. It passed planning with no issues, no appeal. I appreciate Ms. Longden's thoughts, but they came in Friday afternoon, I think to all of us, because I think we all got an email, I believe that's correct, I think it was Friday afternoon. They responded Monday with an invitation, but, I mean, she wasn't available, but then they didn't know there was anything to respond to until Friday night. So, I don't know that that's necessarily fair for them. They've gone through the entire process. I would prefer just to have an up or down vote. I think that's, we talk a lot about being pro-business. This is a business. I've been to the one in Tempe. It is probably a more compact area than you would imagine. I sat outside it for about half an hour and couldn't hear a sound, didn't see anything. I have driven by it many times. My kids, just as a coincidence, love the meatballs at IKEA. So, we have made the long drive down to Tempe to go to IKEA, have driven right by this on numerous occasions, and have had no issues. I think there was mention of people either living around there and so forth. Alan, what would be the nearest actual residence to this?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I don't know the exact distance, but it would be probably about a quarter of a mile till you got south of the CAP before you hit some single-family residents. There are some apartments that are probably maybe a thousand feet away or something like that.
I mean, the other side of the 101, and that's a ways just to begin with, there's nothing.
Yeah, there's nothing north of the 101. The existing apartments are west of 68th Street, and then you'd have to go south of the CAP before you'd hit a single-family neighborhood.
Yeah, I just, I don't know what's going to change, fact-wise, about any of the issues that were addressed, lead and so forth. Obviously, that'd be the case with every shooting range everywhere, and obviously, our peers around the country, as Mr. Wood suggested, and in Arizona, have, I think Tempe has found them to be an excellent corporate partner. It's a very clean facility. Like I said, you wouldn't necessarily really even know it's there. I understand people have strongly held views about firearms, but, but obviously, that's everywhere. That's not, I don't think C2 should be punished necessarily for people's thoughts about that, given that a tragedy could occur anywhere, and you have, if the Harkins Theater is the issue, or the other uses are an issue, I guess I would also refer the comments about Dick's Sporting Goods. We want big boxes to not be empty, so I was happy when Dick's came in to replace the Sports Authority. I think, I used to shop at that Sports Authority. I haven't been to the Dick's, but I believe that's right next to the Harkins, where I will confess, I saw Star Wars twice over Christmas. So, I've been there, I'm intimately familiar with this, there's an Outback there, there's a lot of different things there, but there's already firearms there. I think the Dick's is open now, so the firearms are there now, and they were there when Sports Authority was there. So, that's not going to change, and that's all closer to the theater, and I think also the Toys R Us, where I have also shopped. I think we got our car seats there seven long years ago. So, I just, I'm not sure how any of these dynamics are going to change, continuing this for two weeks, except the applicant will spend more time not building his facility, not hiring people in my district, but they could be people in your districts as well, they're certainly Arizonans, almost to be sure. I'm not sure what that accomplishes, other than wasting two weeks. So, if you're against it, I guess I would just argue, now's the time to vote no, and let's let them fish or cut bait.
I, I don't.
Councilman Banzwell, you have a question or comment?
I'm supportive of a continuance. I'm not necessarily saying that this is something that should be voted against. We have a colleague in the council that would like a little more time. I do believe this case has never been continued, correct?
Mayor, Councilman Banzwell, this is the first time it has landed on your agenda. However, I believe it was continued at the village earlier, because they had some issues.
Well, that's, none of us sit on the village. This is the first time that we are seeing it here at the council, so it's not, as far as I'm concerned, that's something that's been kicked down, the can hasn't been kicked down the line here by this council. You know, it is an industry that, that obviously is thriving, you know, it's an industry where... it's an industry where people are, with gainful employment. It's an industry, it's an entertainment industry. A lot of people have been to shooting ranges and, for various reasons. And I'm not necessarily saying that this is a bad industry. In fact, I, you know, probably will end up supporting it. What I am saying is, it's never been continued before. We're talking about a two-week continuance. We have concerns from at least one member of the council, and so I want to respect that request, and that's why we're continuing. Now, again, the other thing that I'll mention is, the decisions that are made, that I'm making, are absolutely for, you know, the business interests of our city, but also, first and foremost, we all exist, meaning this council and our business leaders. Those industries exist for the people of Phoenix. And if people have concerns, then we should pump the brakes a little bit, make sure that everyone's concerns are at least heard before we make these types of decisions.
Councilman Stark?
Thank you. I, I mean, I don't own guns and I don't go to a shooting gallery, but I suspect this sounds like a really good company. Could we just separate it? Perhaps the issue is looking at a text amendment, not to put more work on the planning staff, but maybe look at it holistically, look at a text amendment to address the issue. It sounds to me like this business has gone above and beyond as far as safety measures, and maybe we can move this on. Separate the issue and then look at the entire issue of these, these facilities and come back to council. I, I mean, I'm hearing from the applicant that they've got a few more open, they have a good reputation. I, I think if we could separate it, maybe, and have a separate look, see, and have building safety involved in that, to look at, you know, the potential of the lead and things like that, and then maybe just move this one forward. So, I'm inclined to support Councilman Waring and just move on this application, and then look at the entire issue.
Mayor?
For you.
Give me a fist bump. Right here.
I can't believe we're agreeing.
Councilman DeCicio, and then Councilman Alkowsky, please.
I think that's a really good compromise that's presented here. At the end of the day, I mean, they're an amazing business. They do amazing work. They employ a lot of people. They take incredible safety precautions. It's one of those types of businesses you would want in your community. And if you look at it, these businesses are doing well all across the country. And there are places for people to go. But one of the things that they did not mention, that they should have mentioned, your attorney's really good, but you missed one major point, is that they also train, I think it's police officers, they train police officers on-site. That's one of their functions that they do. Multiple jurisdictions go there for specific training. Now, I know we have other training here too, but other jurisdictions, other types of policing agencies, go to this location in order for training. And so, I don't see the purpose of the delay at all. I mean, all it does is it, you know, puts a situation where a good business owner is now gonna be held up to another delay. It's an unnecessary delay. It's, every 24 hours matters, and Councilman Stark and I remember that, remember the discussion we had with trying to get permitting done quickly. We worked together on that. And every 24 hours to a business owner means a lot. There are carrying costs, expenses, and it's 24 hours that somebody doesn't have a job. Thank you, Mayor.
I thank you, Councilman Alkowsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Alan, so the Village, what was the vote at the Village level?
Mayor, Councilman Alkowsky, the Village did approve this one by a six to one vote.
And planning zoning?
The Planning Commission was a seven to zero vote.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions by members of this council? Okay, so the motion is for a two-week continuance through, okay, until the next, okay, continuance until our next formal council meeting. There is a second. All in favor say aye.
No.
No.
Or do it again. I'm gonna bifurcate this. I apologize not being clear, because I'm gonna ask both for the ayes and then the noes. Okay, so all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, I think the noes have it. So, we'll now move to the substantive item. Councilman Waring, do you have a motion?
Thank you. Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application. We have a second. Are there any comments that haven't already been made on the substantive motion? Vice Mayor?
I have a question. Jennifer had a lot of questions. So, can those get answered by the applicant?
Mayor, Council, that's up to you guys, if you would like to.
I would like, she, there were questions, and I would like, before I vote, I would like the applicant to answer them.
Okay. And so, Ms. Longdon, who obviously is a great leader in our community, raised a lot of issues. She was obviously very complimentary of this particular company, but did, was concerned about the precedent that this might set. I think our former planning director, now Councilman Stark, suggested that regardless of what happens today, that we go through a text amendment, so we can set strict standards, so in case any other entities in this business may wanna enter into shopping centers, et cetera, that we set the appropriate standards. But I do think she raised some environmental issues. I assume that's what you're talking about. And I believe that, they tried to address it a little bit, but Mr. Woods, in light of the fact that the vice mayor is requesting additional answers, I think specifically on some of the environmental issues.
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, with your permission, I'll have my client come in, because they're the ones who operate it. They're the ones who have to deal with the regulations, et cetera.
And I guess we're, it is the environmental issue. So, if there are items into play for the environmental, that's what I wanna hear.
Sure. For the record, my name is Bo Burgis, and I'm the managing member and owner of C2 Tactical. And with me is Vincent Vasquez. He's also a member and owner, and the general manager of C2 Tactical. Ladies and gentlemen of council, appreciate your time tonight. Jennifer, thank you for posing the questions. I think they're very valid. I think it's a valid concern. We've been in the business for eight years now and are well-versed, I guess, in talking about the safety protocols, the environmental protocols. Quite frankly, I'm just gonna come out and say this. There's three things I don't like to talk about: guns, politics, and religion. Unfortunately, I'm doing two of them tonight, so.
Amen.
Yeah, thank you. There it is. There's three trifecta. So, with that, we have spent a lot of time over the past years discussing how we, how we deal with the environmental issues. And I guess the, the main concern is always the lead particulations within the use of the range. So, there's two main things that allow us to remediate the lead. First of all, the engineered backstop, which Mr. Wood spoke to earlier, is actually a big large rubber berm, which consists of more or less chopped up truck tires from the large mining vehicles. So, that does two things. It provides negative deceleration to projectile in a safe manner. It also traps the projectile basically in its state, so the leg fragmentation and the particulation you usually get when a bullet hits another object, that's where you get the leg fragmentation. So, our first remediation level is how we stop the bullet. The second remediation level happens when we scrub and move the air within the range. And I think as Mr. O'Neil stated, our air handling system, we run about 33 air exchanges an hour. An operating room runs about 18. So, our joke is, if you really wanna have a clean surgery, come down to C2 Tactical. We've got a clean spot for you. That air is scrubbed through three layers of filtration. The first one is typical to a residential filter, the MERV 11, I believe. The second one is an intermediate filter, and the last filtration is a HEPA filter. So, we are filtering the air down to a, basically a .99 particulate level. And I'll give you a good example, in preparation for some of these great questions. We recently had a third party come in and do air quality monitoring testing at our range in five or six different areas, predominantly areas where either our employees are and/or our customers are. The way OSHA looks at the environmental concerns and the acceptable lead levels, they have kind of three different tiers. You have a certain window that they tolerate. You have kind of a, you're in the no-fly zone, and then you have, you're in deep trouble, and you need to remediate this and fix this immediately. Four of our five sensors detected no lead at all in the air. We had one that detected levels below the minimum, and that was actually right above the backstop, which, that's a really bad place to be if you're a person. So, we don't have people back there. And the reason that there was probably lead detected in the air there is that's where the bullets are actually hitting other bullets, and some of those particles coming out. So, not only are we proud of our air filtration systems, we believe in it, and we've got the, and have the means to test it, and we do test it about twice a year, to make sure that it's running up to, up to par and up to speed. So, I hope that answered your question?
It did. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? I mean, you guys, I think, you know, she raised a couple of her good questions. Anything else that I can speak to while I'm here? More than happy. I love talking about this kind of stuff. All right. Any thoughts on religion you'd like to share with us tonight?
No.
No.
I'll just add one more comment to Vincent Vasquez, that this system and the system that we are looking at purchasing is the same systems for bullet containment that law enforcement purchase. Federal agencies purchase these same systems that we are purchasing.
All right, excellent. Any additional questions for either the lawyer or the operator?
I have a curious question.
Vice Mayor?
The rubberized material that you use, does it also control the sound?
It, that's a really good question, and that's the second reason that we use the rubber, is because it does act as a pretty good sound damper. At the back of the range, as you know, the, as we call it, the muzzle signatures all travel downrange. So, at our other existing facility in Mesa, we have a steel backdrop. That's very noisy. You get a lot of basically echo or resonance off that. So, the rubber adds a layer of sound mitigation absorption. And one of the things that I think Nick mentioned, but in C2 Tactical and Tempe, we actually share a space and have a common wall with the Aveda Hair Institute. So, right next to our space, I have classrooms, and we have a massage therapy training school. You, you don't hear anything, you can hardly hear anything in our retail. You can't hear anything when you're in their space. And again, that's the level of attention and detail we put into the design and the construction of the facilities to make sure that our neighbors, and quite frankly, specific here, Massage Envy is to the west of us. We've met with Amy. We've had her down at the facility. I think we, did you sell her a membership? We almost had her buy a membership, but she, she, we made a believer out of her. She had some concerns.
Exchange of services.
Yeah, and so, so we take it very seriously, because, you know, rightly so, the last thing I need after I spend $2 million on a facility is to have neighbors on the other side that are upset because we're, you know, messing up their business plan for, for reasons of them hearing gun noises. So, we take it very seriously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments or questions by members of this council? Okay, so we have a motion in favor. We have a second. Roll call. DeCicio?
Yes.
Gallego?
Abstain.
Alkowsky?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton? Yes. So, that passes unanimously from this city council. Next item on the agenda is item number?
150.
150. 150 is a zoning case at the 42nd Street and Dynamite Boulevard. This case, I believe, was continued by Councilman Waring from the April 5, 2017 meeting. Will follow the same procedure. Kind of ironic, but okay. We take each.
Well, now, now I think the neighbors are at least not as unhappy, if they're unhappy.
Yeah, we had to continue. Now, we're hearing.
All right, no problem.
I was glad to support the continuance of this item.
We, every member of this council supported Councilman Waring's request for continuance at the last meeting, despite the additional carrying costs of the applicant. Item 150 is a proposed rezoning of northeast corner of 42nd Street and Dynamite Boulevard. Mr. Stevenson, you have a staff report.
Mayor, members of council, yes. This request is to rezone a site from County RU43 with the pending S1 application to R118 to allow for single-family residential development. Staff does recommend approval per stipulations. You see this next aerial, the area in red is the subject site. It did have an additional area that was a little flag area that was over here, that was part of the original application, but is now proposed to be withdrawn pursuant to the latest memo that came out earlier today. And so, here's the surrounding zoning. You see it within this area right here. Here's the proposed site plan. The applicant has worked extensively with the neighbors during this continuance time to address some of the issues that were raised because of neighborhood concerns. They dropped the density count. They dropped out this area that I talked about over here that was part of their original application. This request, as it went through the process, was first denied by the Desert Village Planning Committee by a four to three vote. The Planning Commission also recommended denial by a three-three-one vote. And the applicant has, as I said, worked extensively to address some of the neighborhood concerns. There was a memo that came out earlier today, dated May 10, 2017, which requests withdrawing the three-quarter vote requirement because the adjoining property owners rescinded their three-quarter vote petition based upon the changes within the May 10 memo to reduce the density, contribute to some single-story lots, and also reduce that acreage down to 10 acres from the original 12.49 that I mentioned. So, staff does recommend approval per the memo today from the Planning and Development Director and adoption of the related ordinance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for our planning director? All right, we'll now move to open a public hearing on this item. Public hearing is now open.
Mayor, I just wanted to ask him one quick question.
Councilman DeCicio, you have a question for our professional staff?
Alan and I talked about it earlier. There was a question about drainage and water. And could you walk us through what you're going to do about making sure it doesn't flood another property?
So, Mayor, Councilman DeCicio, the, the subject site, as revised, it shows right here. You see this wash area coming in right here. The applicant is required to allow that wash and to come in onto the property. They cannot block the flow of it, so it will continue on unimpeded into their property, and then it will discharge to the south. They're required to do half-street improvements all along their portion right here, and to then connect the water across the road in a box culvert of some sort that will then connect back up to its traditional water flow. So, it will not impact any of the upstream properties in terms of the water flow in this area.
And city staff is going to be reviewing that part of that to make sure that it does that, correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCicio, that is correct. If the council approves the zoning, when they continue on the development process, we do a civil review where their civil engineer will submit plans. Our civil engineers will take a look at that and review that to ensure that those flows are maintained.
None of those, go ahead.
Oh, keep asking.
Are you sure? I just want one more thing. Just wanted to make sure on the record too, that you'll be working on whatever the design is to make sure that that water's all captured and it doesn't flow further down, correct?
Well, Mayor and Councilman DeCicio, so they are permitted to discharge water off of their site, but it can't be any more than historically went off of their property. So, they have to retain what falls on their site. They can't contribute to adding more off-flow, but the water that has flown through there historically, they're permitted to pass that through. But they would have to, to put it in a culvert to go underneath the road, because they'll do the half-street improvements for a curb gutter, sidewalk, all those things for the street.
Councilman Waring?
So, perhaps more slightly in English, the water to the north of them, fellow named TJ Marco lives up there. He had concerns that maybe they were gonna build something that would block the water from exiting his property. That can't happen, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, they absorb the water. At the very least, they have to take in the same amount of water they were taking in before. So, it is not allowed to back up onto his property to the north.
That is correct.
Then, when they effectively spit the water out, it's gotta go at no more than the amount it was already going before, and it's gotta go in the same direction. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, that's sort of a translation of what was just said there. There has been flooding issue before. The hope is that this project, perhaps their attorney can speak to this, or the project developer, is gonna make things better, actually. I think that's the, the goal. It's not the goal of building the project, but it is a goal of the people building the project. And I, I would have made fun of me too, about the continuance thing, so, thanks for taking the easy low road. You guys always disappoint. No, I'm kidding. I would have done that too. But this, as you heard the history of this, this...
Would have been the first.
I would have jumped all over it. You guys are actually kind. Just that kind of mean person. But, but as you heard the history of this, this was not in a good place a month ago. I mean, there were substantive changes that needed to be made. The applicant knew that. In order to get to this point, we wouldn't even be here if they hadn't worked with, I think it's the 11 property owners. I'm not sure 100% are good with it now, but before you were looking at a three-quarters vote, and now that's been taken away. And that doesn't happen that often. I do wanna say thank you to the neighbors who worked a lot on this, and, and the applicant as well, because, because a lot of changes were made in this intervening period. So, it was not, they wouldn't have a project. There would be no carrying costs, because they would have been stopped. There would be no carrying costs, because they would have been stuck if it hadn't been for this work. So now, Mayor, if you would...
Are there very much, Councilman Waring? Mr. Riddell did not fail to call, but you were called up to the podium by the councilmen. It sounds like you've used...
Oh, I didn't mean to overstep. I'm sorry.
That's right, fine. So whatever test you may have, sounds like the continuance time period was well utilized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I will keep it very, very brief. We really do appreciate the opportunity to work through these issues with the neighbors. We really appreciate all the hard work that they put in and are very grateful that we were able to achieve resolution here. I would be remiss if I didn't point out, Alan is certainly correct about the drainage, but there are actually some tributaries up north that Mr. Marco was concerned about, and we are addressing those through our drainage plan as well. So I've worked with these neighbors, and they have spent so much time with me. I don't think they want another minute more, and I would like to turn it over to them to move this along. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one card in favor. Casey Henry. Casey, did you wish to provide testimony on this item?
My name's Casey Henry. I live at 4307 East Dynamite, which is directly across from the Suoro Trails Project. Good afternoon, Members of the City Council. Mayor Stanton, Mr. Waring, we meet again. Our community is mainly single-family homes, borders this Suoro Trails Project, and we consist of approximately, you know, 15 parcels raising in size from one acre to about five acres. At the beginning of this whole process, our community was unified in our universal opposition to the initial proposal that was proffered at the Desert View Village Planning Committee. Subsequent to the city planning commission meeting in March and a protest filed by our community, the Eco Vista team, which consisted of Ms. Riddell, Ms. Bitter Smith, Mr. Ardean, and Mr. Wilhelm, they began to meet with our community and tried to address our concerns, I believe, and we worked jointly to attempt to resolve our differences. And over time, as a result of these continued negotiations with Eco Vista, I believe that we have effectively worked through many of the different stipulations concerning this project and a lot of my community members' concerns. I believe that the stipulations that have been provided to you today actually answer the concerns of our community members. I know there are a few who have a few to go, but I also believe these stipulations maintain a fair compromise for both our community and Eco Vista. So where we stand at this point in time is while, you know, we're, we're a very small community, and this is very impactful to us, the, the biggest issue that we, we still have is the drainage and the flooding, which is rampant in the Cave Creek area, something that cannot be addressed as we sit here now, but something that we hope will, through city planning, will be addressed and won't make things any worse for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henry. Appreciate your testimony. Any questions, Mr. Henry? Lana Cullen is, is opposed to the item, and then also, Erla White, if you'd come forward, also opposed. And then Carolyn Crabtree is opposed, but not wishing to speak as well. Ms. Cullen, good to see you.
My name is Lana Cullen, and I live at 4449 East Dynamite Boulevard. That is the southeast corner of 44th Street and Dynamite. There would be the street of 44th and one property between myself and what would be contiguous area to this development. I have lived there with my husband and my kids for 40 years, this August. We obviously lived out there when we were one of two houses on all of Dynamite. We've seen a lot of changes, some of them we like, some of them we don't. We have an equine facility on our five acres, as well as our residence. I have a real problem with seeing home developments move into our area where a full-grown man cannot fall down between the houses. That is not why we moved well out of the city, and it does not work well with those of us who have livestock. Those folks eventually are simply not happy with us, and it doesn't matter how clean you keep a facility, and ours is immaculate, you will have flies where you have livestock. I would not like to have neighbors who are unhappy with me any more than I would think other people would want to be, cause unhappiness for their neighbors. The way the neighborhood has been developed, and our plat in particular, which happens to be county, everything on the south side of Dynamitis County, I don't know if anyone's mentioned that. It has given the people who have subdivisions that are being built in Phoenix, which is on the opposite side of Dynamite, they seem to be pretty much granted whatever they need, whatever number of homes they want to build, and everything rolls down onto us wherever the drainage and flooding is a problem. It increases it every time these are built. And I can think of six in our area, and putting a seventh in doesn't make it right. I would really like to see the city of Phoenix, of which I'm assuming eventually our plat probably will be part, have some consideration for those of us. So far, there's been nothing. The fact is, the huge Tatum Ranch area, which was developed first, has no substantive retention areas whatsoever. That large 10-acre Dynamite Park was supposed to be an excavated retention area, just like almost all of your parks in Phoenix are. It is not, and that has caused us unbelievable hardship on the south side of Dynamite. So you'll have to forgive us if we're just not real excited to see a whole bunch of more land covered, which is now absorbing water, and that just increases the threat to all of us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for testimony, very much. Ms. White, did you wish to provide testimony for this council?
Good evening, folks. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Doctor, Councilman Dr. Waring. My name is Dr. Erla White. I live at 4319 East Mark Lane. My mother lives at 4315 East Mark Lane. Carolyn Crabtree, she's here. Our homes are the two little homes that you see just, when you look at the screen, just to the right, and there are two washes that are not depicted on that, north of the large wash. I do want to say that Eco Vista, Susan Bitter Smith, and the two gentlemen here have worked, have worked with the neighbors, that's absolutely for sure. We've had a few meetings out at the property site, and several issues have been addressed through stipulations, and we really appreciate that. I would like you to know, though, however, in the invocation, I'd like to call your attention back to that, where the gentleman talked about a biblical character, and we feel a lot like David versus Goliath. The first time I stood before the city council, Phoenix City Council, was with Mayor Terry Goddard, and that was back with Tatum Ranch. And it was with Tatum Ranch, then, that our properties changed with the washes. For, my mother and I have lived there for going on 36 years, and so the, the property development will not improve the flood, for sure. We also have the same concern, as Dr. Waring mentioned, about TJ Marco. There is going to be flow of water down through the eastern border there. However, it's supposed to be a 23-foot setback, but we're still concerned about that. Now, my concern, and why I mentioned to you that I stood before Phoenix Council at that time, was that many stipulations were made, many, many stipulations. I don't know if you all know the historical context of that, but that was back with Charles Keating, and every government entity outside of Phoenix came in opposition to that, Scottsdale, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The very first day that they began development, even before they began development, they destroyed the Desert Foothill scenic landscape and that scenic drive that had been in place since the 1950s and 60s by Cave Creek and Carefree and the property owners. The city of Phoenix also approved a special use permit, which Ms. Riddell was the attorney on, and I have a letter from the city of Phoenix about all of the stipulations that were not, that were supposed to take place and not take place. For 10 years, I have called about those stipulations. Nothing has happened. I still have manure, as does my mom, and horse chips from that. Every time I call the city of Phoenix, I'm told, "You need to call Neighborhood Services." Neighborhood Services tells me, "You need to call Maricopa County." I've had Maricopa County and the flood control and the city of Phoenix all out to my property on six separate occasions over the past 10 years, and they've told me, "Ma'am, you have a civil lawsuit." I am the David. I don't have the money to bring a civil lawsuit against the city of Phoenix or anyone else, nor do I desire to do that. So I stand before you, asking, if you approve this, please let me know what assurances we have. Who will enforce the stipulations, such as the one-foot height that, that's been promised in a stipulation? Because otherwise, we're going to be flooded out, and instead of having manure and wood chips in our yard, and our land recessing, and the folks walk the property, they know what we mean by the reseeding, what happens with that running heavy water enough to carry away people and animals. So...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Stevenson to answer the question. Enforcement of stipulations.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, Members of Council, zoning stipulations are enforced in, typically in one of two ways. The first one is through the development process that the Planning and Development Department does. So when a project comes in, for example, she referenced the stipulation about a pad buildup of no more than one foot. That is something that my department would administer as the civil plans are reviewed to allow for a building pad that is no more than one foot from the existing ground elevation. And we did have these draft stipulations reviewed by the civil engineering folks to make sure that we could comply with them. And so, that's the predominant way that the stipulations will be adhered to on this particular project, because a number of them are design-related issues that will be administered as part of the development process. There is a stipulation, for example, about having a disclosure for operational characteristics of nearby ranchettes and animal privileges. That, too, is something that upfront would be administered by, by my department as well, because they, we do have standard language that's been approved by the Law Department to have them record against those deeds, so that future buyers will know this is what they're buying into. The other way that stipulations are complied with are through the Neighborhood Services Department. Those typically deal with more operational issues, of which we don't have any of those real stipulations in this particular application.
And the flooding, the flooding is the greatest concern? Is, who, who would, who, who controls that?
All right, Ms. Stevenson, flooding issues addressed through, or tend to be addressed through the stipulations?
Yeah, the, the flooding issues will be addressed through the stipulations by my department as the project goes through the rest of the review process. So they have to have a civil engineer submit plans. Our civil engineering team will review those plans to ensure that they're meeting all the requirements, and that's how it will be done from a planning perspective. Then, once it gets built, we have a, a civil team that will go out and review and make sure that the appropriate infrastructure was put in, and the riprap, and the contouring of the land to make sure that it all flows properly, is done pursuant to the plans.
Okay, appreciate that. May I just make one final comment, sir? That, that, that is that I am one of the homeowners, as is my mother, who rescinded the vote, because we wanted to do this in good faith, but it was due to a coercion, or you might say an incentive. It wasn't that we all wanted to do it because we're in favor of it. We were promised in doing so that all of the perimeter lots would be only one story, and so I just want to make that clear, and I also want to make clear that no one in this neighborhood has stood before you today and spoke on behalf of the neighborhood, it's behalf of us as individuals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, you have a question?
Alan, she just made a statement regarding the one-story around the per, is that in there?
It is. Mayor, Vice Mayor, stipulation 1D says maximum building height on lots 1 through 12, limited one-story, 22 feet.
Okay, my second question is not, not in, it's not about this case. She mentioned about a case about 10 years ago, and getting kind of the runaround through the departments. I would like for someone to follow up with her about the 10-year stipulations and see where we're responsible for, not you, I guess it's to Ed, for looking into this and seeing what happened, and if we're responsible for fixing it.
All right. Thank you very much. I advise her. Any other questions for Mr. Stevenson? Okay, we'll now close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Councilman Waring if he has a motion.
Mayor motioned to withdraw the three-quarter vote and approve per memo from the Planning and Development Director dated May 10th, 2017, and adopt their related ordinance.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments or questions, Members of this council? Councilman Valenzuela?
Just really quick, I want to commend Councilman Waring. This is a tough case, and obviously it was. It started with the three-quarter vote, and to bring it down where it is now, it obviously took a lot of really honest outreach. And so, I commend the, the entire team for going out there and doing a really good job and doing it right. And so I commend you and your leadership on this, and I'll be supportive.
Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number 151. Item number 151 is a proposed rezoning northeast corner of 35th Avenue and Baseline Road. My understanding is out of abundance of caution, Councilman Gallego is declaring a conflict and will not be participating in this item. Will follow the same procedure. See if there's a staff report from Mr. Stevenson. Then I'll open the public hearing, take any comments, and then see if there's a motion. Mr. Stevenson.
Mayor, Members of the Council, this request is a rezoning for the northeast corner of 35th Avenue and Baseline Road from S1 to R18 for a single-family residential development. Staff does recommend approval per stipulations. You see on the aerial photograph here, the area in red is the subject site, surrounded by other single-family residential, some larger lot, you know, county development here, and some commercial development, and then the park to the south, and another commercial development to the south. This is the surrounding zoning. You see the Maricopa County Island area shown around here, but then the R18 zoning, same as the applicant's requesting on this other side here as well. This is the proposed site plan for the project, and these are their proposed elevations. The applicant has worked for a number of months on this particular application as well, and the case was approved by the Levine Village Planning Committee for R110 development with some modifications. The Planning Commission approved it per, some of those modifications with Addendum B and additional stipulation vote by a seven to one. This case was appealed by a citizen requesting a stipulation for a deceleration lane on Baseline Road into the proposed residential subdivision. The applicant did work with the Street Transportation Department and Planning Development Department to provide that deceleration lane as part of the proposed stipulations. So the memo that came out on April 20th does add that stipulation to the proposed request. Staff recommends approval per the memo from April 20th, 2017, and adoption of the related ordinance, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our Planning Director? If not, I will open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I have a few cards here. Phil Hertel is in favor and says that he is in favor with the new stip that requires right-turn lane on Baseline. Is that included?
It is, Mayor.
Okay. So, Mr. Hertel, I don't know if there's anything else you want to say? No, all right, good to see you. John Komodo is in favor on behalf of the Levine Village Planning Committee. Speak if requested or needed. It's up to you. Did you wish to provide testimony? You're okay? Thank you so much. Mr. James Dibler, you're in favor. Did you wish to provide testimony or just register your fa- Did you wish to provide testimony, or just register your fa, the fact you're in favor? Thank you so much. Thanks for, for being here. I have no other cards for this item. Does anyone else here wish to provide testimony on item 151? Going once, going twice? I will now close the public hearing, and I'll turn it to any member of the council. Is there a motion on item 151? Councilman Noakowski?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request per the memo of the Planning and Development Director dated April 20th, 2017, and adopt the related ordinance. This memo adds a deceleration lane stipulated for Baseline Road to address the traffic issues that were brought to us by the Levine Village and Planning.
Second. The motion, we have a second. Any additional comments for Members of this council?
Mayor, I just want to thank all those individuals out there in the Levine community that come together, and especially the developer to sit down and really work these things out. I mean, they started off with 400-plus homes, and they worked it down to where it was, where the, where the community felt comfortable. They also addressed the issues of traffic down Baseline Road, and I think this is really the way you're supposed to work together as a team, so thank you, and also thank Phil and all those individuals, John, to work really close with the developer to make sure that our community is taken care of. And with that, I have no other comments, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego. I'm sorry, Noakowski.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Pastor.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, so that item passes unanimously. Okay, so we're down, done with our formal agenda item, but there are some additional citizen comment cards, and I'll see if any of the folks are here. Stark, well, I see him, Craig Stably wishes to provide testimony for this City Council and citizen comment. Is Vince Jamede here? Still here? Excellent, thanks for staying. Greta Rogers as well. Reni LaCombe, you still here? How about Franklin Marino?
Yes.
Thank you. How about Pascal Labadi? Thank you. Michael Anthony Moynihan? All right, how about Heather Hamel? Noah Briggs? Queen Muhammad Ali, good to see you. And then Mr. James Dibler.
Anne.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stably, the floor is yours, up to three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Craig Stably, I live at 5539 East Exeter. I'm presenting to the council two citizens' petitions. Both of these petitions relate to group homes, and the controversy that most of you know about now, I'm not going to address the controversy, but I do want to, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just submit the written petitions.
Please, and our city clerk will accept them on behalf of the city.
And I'll read some of it, not all of it, into the minutes.
Let me ask you, does he have to read the whole letter? Or does he have, or can he submit it the way he just did?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, what it says in the charter is that he has to present the written petition, so he doesn't necessarily have to read it all, as long as he's presented and entered into our official minutes.
All right, Mr. Stably, hit the highlights, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I, in our neighborhood, recognizes that there needs to be a balance respecting the rights of the disabled to live in residential communities. At the same time, there's rights of the homeowners living in communities also. We believe the ordinance requiring a minimum distance between larger group homes helps achieve the balance. Further, the continued policy of non-enforcement of the spacing code may adversely affect the protected parties due to the negative rhetoric during further discourse. I'm not going to read this part, but I have attached a case study that our, our legal counsel has provided for us. Our board has unanimously approved that. The case study addresses neighborhood concerns of two larger group homes in Arcadia. Larger group homes is six to 10 people. These homes are 100 feet apart on the same street. So we kind of have a quasi-commercial cluster occurring here, and it's all due to the suspension of the spacing requirements. My petition is, Phoenix City Code, Chapter 6, Section 619, states in summary that any group home with six to 10 residents must be located at least 120 feet away from a similar home. The enforcement of the subject zoning ordinance has been suspended by the Planning, Phoenix Planning Department in July of 2015. The suspended ordinance of the City Council adopted, or, the suspended enforcement of the Council adopted ordinance has effectively amended the zoning code without due process or City Council approval. During and due to the suspension of enforcement of subject zoning ordinance, various numerous residents of the City of Phoenix have suffered significant adverse effects due to the increasing clustering of group homes. Persuant the Chapter 4, Section 22, I hereby, as a citizen and resident of Phoenix, petition City Council to consider and enact, within 15 days, a resolution, ordinance, or measure to immediately reinstate and enforce the spacing requirements of group homes. A second petition is regarding the text amendment that's been moving rather rapidly through our, our process, and I'm going to read a proposed resolution for the council. It's just a draft, but it's my petition. Whereas, the City Council of Phoenix, Arizona, does hereby find as follows, the City Council desires to fully and thoroughly scrutinize the applicability, substance, and legality of the proposed text amendment of the Phoenix Code, referred to as ZTA 22-08. The City Council has deemed it best interest of the City of Phoenix and its residents to retain external counsel to ensure enforceability of the subject zoning ordinance, including withstanding federal scrutiny under the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act or similar laws. This issue about group homes, I want to commend, first of all, the Planning Department. They've really done a nice job with outreach and working with different groups and citizens. This isn't a Planning Department issue, this is a legal issue, which is why I'm petitioning City Council to retain an outside expert to sort through this legal minefield and prevent, or as best we can, avoid any future lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stably, for taking the time and your patience to sit through that whole meeting. Next speaker, Mr. Jamede.
Mr. Jamede.
Oh, and so, can someone bring the microphone to him? There you go. And then it'll be Greta Rogers.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Vince Jamede, District 1, Bell Road and Grovers Area, 31st Avenue, Grovers. I haven't heard anybody bring up any issues on blind yet, blind people, and access to things such as crossing streets. You have audible signals on some and very few stoplights, and the signals are, they're not loud enough to, to hear them over the traffic, and the boom boxes you hear bouncing by. So by the time you get started, you don't have enough time to cross the street. Could you als, could you also add a few more seconds to the time that we get to cross the streets? Another issue that I was asked by the Blind Veterans Association to bring up is the light rail. It, don't have much problem getting on it, we have a problem getting tickets, because touchpads don't work for blind people, and, nor does it help when the sun is hitting it. So they should be either enclosed somehow, shaded, and use buttons that, so you can, you can feel your way through it. And, let's see, there was another issue that they had about, let's see, crossing, well, major intersections for one thing, and not having enough time, increase the audible sounds, and basically, that's, that's about it, and, and, you know, nobody addresses what blind people. You know, we have a right to get around, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jamede, for taking the time to come down here and provide that important testimony.
Thank you.
We have Peter Fisher, our ADA coordinator for the city, look at the important issues that Mr. Jamede just raised. Ms. Rogers?
Mayor and Council, I would like you to place the subject of the Sheraton Hotel on the agenda at your next formal meeting. This is a colossal failure by the city for ever getting into, into this mess, at the insistence upon our former 25-watt mayor, Phil Gordon. This is a financial noose around the neck of the city, all of us citizens who are the financial resource for the city. I want a full report. I don't want any glossing over the facts. I want a full factual report at the next formal meeting, agendized. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rogers, very much. Franklin Marino? And then Pascal Labadi? You'll be next, after Mr. Marino. Great to see you.
Mayor and remaining members of the City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Franklin Marino, and I'm the Secretary of the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, PLE, the union that represents our rank and file Phoenix police officers and detectives. There would have been more board members here today, however, they are either in or en route to Washington, DC for Police Week, where they're going to honor one of our own officers, that was David Glasser, who was killed in the line of duty last year, as well as the 37 other Phoenix police officers that have died in the line of duty. So if I can respectfully, could we get a moment of silence to honor our fallen officers? If that's okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just basically here to reiterate the importance of proper staffing for the Police Department. I know 3125 is a target number that we've set, based on what we can afford. PLE, remain steadfast in our position of 2.5 officers per thousand citizens. It's important to note that 3125 is 260 less than where we were staffed in 2008, and interestingly enough, there's plenty of growth and development in the city. We've got all the renovation and redevelopment going on downtown, the population's growing. Our Police Department needs to be fully staffed to provide the proper service for the citizens of this city. And the other important factor is the fact that we're spread out across 530 square miles of real estate, so it challenges us with what we have now. Under the current manpower constraints, we are reactive. We don't have the time to proactively patrol neighborhoods like we used to, so things like property crimes are on the uptick, because we're not there to have a uniformed, marked presence. On the backside, our investigators, our detectives, they're overwhelmed with caseloads, and we are losing cases for prosecution because they're running out as far as statute of limitations. We know that response time for emergency calls are up due to fewer officers on the street covering larger geographic areas. We don't expect the city to hire 1,000 officers in one year. It's unrealistic, it's impractical. However, we believe that you, you as city leaders, need to take the initiative to come up with a reasonable plan to achieve 4,000 to 4,200 officers over a five-year period, and the plan needs to be mapped out, and funds need to be set aside. We've been told the total cost of hiring 1,000 officers would be about $125 million. This is 3% of the total city budget, which is almost $4 billion. When spread out over a five-year timeframe, the cost drops to .06% per year of the entire budget. Certainly, that percentage can be found in the city coffers to properly staff, excuse me, properly staff the Police Department to provide the citizens with the service that they deserve. If the city manager and the council are adamant that adequate funds are not available, the charter allows the council to assess fees and levy taxes if needed to fund city services. Whether or not the City Council imposes an emergency tax, a food tax, or public safety tax, we need to come up with a long-term solution to this problem. Thank you very much. Citizens deserve better.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marino. Mr. Labadi, I hope I pronounced that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Pascal Labad. I live on 1534 East Valletta Street. I lived there for 39 years, and most of the mayors and council I worked for, worked for Mr. DeCiccio's, for the council managers at Kevin Good, and so on, and so on. The reason I'm here today because I own four property down on the, where I live, including some apartment buildings, and right across the road is at the Clinica La Familias. The owner is Ricardo Celayas. Mr. Celayas, he filed as a false information with the City of Phoenix for one thing, that what he wants to rezone that, that property for. Now, the property on 1529 East Valletta Street, it was at, it still is, it should be, residential property. The Mr. Celayas, he bought that property, he demolished the property, he paved the lot and started parking in there without City of Phoenix permit. Now, I believe that everyone in the City of Phoenix, or everyone on earth, we are all the same. Doesn't matter who we are and what we are, the law is a law. Now, the Mr. Celayas, he filed an application that he wants to rezoning the lot of 529 East Valletta Street for the benefit of the miracle, the doctor's office. That's not true, because Mr. Celaya, he walked down in the State of Arizona Miracle Board, and he got access in there. Now, you don't need for a, for the, pardon me, doctor's office, but you need for the people going to, for the access in there, and then I inform, confirm, affirm that. Doctor's employees, they are not used to give the help and the people who really need it.
Thank you.
But the office in there, they do give the money, Medicare, and so on, whatever you need, for people who don't need that. Now, they open from eight o'clock in the morning until seven o'clock at night, and why they open at seven o'clock at night? Because the people go to work, and they go down there, and they get their paper for help because they don't need it. Somebody in there, they drive cars, 50, 60, 70,000 dollars a cars. Those people, they don't need help.
Thank you.
Now, the Mrs. Celay, the, this office here, they had a hearing, because at the time, they gave them the notice for the hearings, it was for hearings, one and the...
Mr. Labadi, the time is up, so you have to finish up whatever point you're making, that you want to make for this council.
Well, okay, what I want now, the 2000, pardon me, April 5th, 2:30, this office here, they had a meeting concerned the, the, the problem for rezoning the lot of 529 Norton, pardon, East Fillmore.
All right, so what are you asking, what are you asking us to do? What do you want, what do you want the city to do?
Well, I have filed a motion for set aside the minute entry on April 5th, 2:30, and reset a new hearing date, so because the, the notice they gave to me, the hearing was at six o'clock.
You're in luck. Our Planning Director is here, and he's going to talk to you directly and make sure we get to the bottom of whether or not the motion you made was properly received by the Department and take proper action. Thank you for your testimony. We just, we're out of time, and we have to move on to other speakers.
Well, I would like to know what's going to happen in there, because...
That's exactly, that's exactly Mr. Stevenson, our Planning Director, we're talking about.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Queen Muhammad Ali?
Good evening. I just wanted to address an issue that I have... I just wanted to address an issue that I have with the, I'm sorry, my name is Queen Muhammad Ali, and I'm a film director, and artist, and visual anthropologist, and I travel in and out of the country, and also in and out of state, and so I had a recent issue with the water, Phoenix Water Department, and actually, I spoke with a representative there, and she was the one that told me to bring it to the council. It was a recent policy that was enforced in December that if someone's water is turned off, they have to pay an extra $150 on top of a $50 delinquent fee. And I just feel that, you know, I wouldn't never known if I wasn't traveling, and I feel that it was something that I should address, because only poor people would find out about this. You know, this is not to the rich, this is only, you know, someone that can't pay their bill, why would they pay an extra $150 on top of that? So, I wanted to see if there was some type of way I can address the policy, change the policy, or get it on the agenda.
All right, thank you very much for coming down and bringing that testimony. Mr. Speaker, I don't know if you have a chance to talk to Mr. Ali about the purposes of the program, and obviously, if there's a request for a policy change, we'd have to go through the subcommittee process. But, but thank you very much for coming down. Great to see you again. How about Mr. Dibler?
I'm here.
You hitting cleanup, you're the last speaker. Make it good.
Okay.
All right, go.
Hello, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona, in Council District 5. What they be say, it is sad that Bass's closed a grocery store on 7th Avenue and Osborne on the southwest corner. This location has been there for 61 years, providing excellent customer service and serving the community. I know Bass's built a store on the same location before Safeway come in, in the early 60s. This store will be, will be demolished for luxury departments and retail at the same location. The city of Phoenix need to do a better job of preserving historic buildings in downtown Phoenix and Maryville. The post-war homes that the bomber John Evans built back in the 50s and 60s need to be preserved for future generation. That mid-century homes have good design and land ground that the homeowners want to restore, like the rural district in central Phoenix. We need to preserve mid-century Phoenix to keep the history alive for years to come. Finally, I encourage former Glendalford chief Mark Bullock to run for US Congress against Joe Frank. He will bring change and new ideas to Washington, DC. I believe that Mark Bullock should change his political federation from Republicans to Democrats due to his political beliefs. He will have support from the professional firefighters of Arizona. Currently, there is no Democrat challenger to run against Republican councilman Joe Frank. Thank you for the time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dibler. There's no other citizen comments here today. Our meeting is now adjourned.